All set.
Welcome, everyone, to the August 16th, 2022, and City Commission meeting. First, we will begin by having some announcements from Porter O'Neill.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few housekeeping items for the Zoom portion of this meeting tonight. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. Please remember to mute yourself during the meeting unless you are speaking. The chat function for this public meeting is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. Unless you are participating during the meeting, please turn your video off. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. You will still be able to hear the meeting. When you are participating in the meeting, please turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send me a chat. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. And now I'll turn the meeting back over to Mayor Shipley.
Thank you very much. And now we will have a little explanation from Sheri about how public comment works.
Thank you, Mayor. When the mayor calls for public comment, individuals attending in person should approach the podium to indicate they wish to speak. The podium can be raised and lowered, and we encourage you to use this feature to ensure your comments are heard. Individuals participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. Individuals will be called on in the order they appear on the meeting host's screen. Please state your name before speaking, and all comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Do I have any motions to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five to zero. That brings us next to our proclamation. We should have someone from Monarch Watch here? Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Shipley, and I'm very pleased to be here. Speak on behalf of Monarch Watch and all the people that have helped us over the years. We started Monarch Watch in 1992 as kind of a test program, and it turned out to be very successful. That program engaged a lot of people in the Midwest. It turned out that we had over 1,000 people interested in their first year. After that, we kind of morphed into an education and research organization, but it quickly became apparent that monarchs were in trouble, that the conservation issues were really primary. So we morphed into a conservation organization, which has promoted a lot of habitat restoration around the country. We have over 40,000 registered monarch waste stations around the world. That includes eight foreign countries. We have a lot of people to thank. We want to thank the City of Lawrence. Lawrence has been very key to our development, and we've had a lot of people that have helped us along the way. By the way, we bring a lot of visitors to Lawrence because of our international reputation and the reputation around the country. We want to thank the Biosurvey and the University of Kansas. We want to thank the master gardeners who have helped us a great deal with Monarch Way Station number one that we have on West Campus, and we'd invite you all to come out and see that sometime. We've had a lot of Monarch Watch volunteers over the years that have helped us greatly. We've had some great staff members, and we've had a great deal of collaboration from the library, Raven Bookstore, Baker Wetlands, and the Natural History Museum. And for all of those people, we are very thankful, and we appreciate everybody's help and consideration. And we look forward to having some of you, and maybe many of you, enjoy us and join us for our 30th anniversary celebration, which will be held on the 15th of September. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And with that, whereas Monarch Watch was founded in 1992 by Dr. Orley Chip Taylor, launching the Monarch Tagging Program in the fall of that year, is celebrating its 30th year. And whereas Monarch Watch is an internationally recognized nonprofit education, conservation, and research program based at the University of Kansas that focuses on the monarch butterfly, its habitat, and its spectacular fall migration. And whereas Monarch Watch promotes monarch butterfly habitat restoration and distributing free milkweeds, administering a butterfly tagging research project that involves thousands of community scientists of all ages from across the eastern U.S. and Canada, and promotes the creation of wildlife habitat through the Monarch Way Station Program, which now includes more than 40,000 registered habitats in nine countries. And whereas, in recognition of the rapid loss of habitats and resources needed for monarch butterflies in the United States, Canada, and Mexico, it is clear that the preservation of the monarch migration will require stewardship by the governments and private citizens of all three countries. And whereas Monarch Watch promotes the protection of monarch habitats throughout North America that will have the effect of protecting vital pollinators and other wildlife. And whereas, Monarch Watch strives to provide the public with information about the biology of monarch butterflies, their migration, and how to use monarchs to further science education in primary and secondary schools. And whereas, we must work together to create, conserve, and protect monarch habitats. Now, therefore, I, Courtney Shipley, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Month of the Monarch, and encourage everyone to explore the various ways to celebrate and take action. Thank you so much. And thank you all for coming to celebrate. That brings us to our consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Commissioners, is there anything that you would like to remove?
I would like to remove C6B.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Nothing. Is there anything that a member of the audience here in person would like to remove from our consent agenda?
C6F.
Thank you. Is there anything else, a member of the audience? Hopefully, the people out in the lobby can hear us. Is there anything anyone online on Zoom would like to remove from the consent agenda? You may use your digital hand to indicate to Sheri.
There are no additional items to pull.
Great. Are there any motions?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five to zero. That brings us to C6B.
Yeah, it's a, I just had a little bit of a further question regarding this, because it seems like we just approved the license, the liquor license for this establishment. I think it was John Brown was the one who brought the text amendment, so I just would like a little bit further information regarding it.
Kyle.
Oh, good. Thank you, Kyle.
Kyle Koby with planning. Yeah, so that is correct. This item was on a city commission agenda. I fail to remember the date now, but you are correct. This was discussed at that city commission meeting. The item before you is the initiation of the text amendment that would amend the land development code based on that same subject, that same property. But this application would be an amendment to the land development code as opposed to the license itself, which was what you voted on last time, if I understand correctly.
Right. And basically, what we are doing is just sending this to Planning Commission for further deliberation, right?
Yes, essentially, that's correct. So what we'll do, if initiated, we'll conduct a review and do an analysis, see if there's anything that needs to be adjusted. We'd work with the applicant on that. We would go through Planning Commission, and they would discuss, and following that, they would forward a recommendation to City Commission, where ultimately, it would be City Commission approval authority.
Okay.
Any other questions from commissioners? Any public comment on this item?
You said public comment, right? Yeah. This is Chris Flowers. I think we should just do away with some of this food slash alcohol, like the percentage requirements. Like, if someone can serve food, and like, and they can serve alcohol, it's like, if they can serve food, it's okay to serve a little alcohol, but it's not okay to serve a lot of alcohol and a little food. That just seems, it seems, I don't understand it, I guess. And also, when we talk about downtown, we talk about how we have vacancies. Like, what would be wrong with more bars downtown if they're filling up vacant properties? I mean, and some of the restaurants, I think they would benefit, like, late at night, like Jimmy John's, if there were more bars, that would be good. I mean, it would be good for some businesses. So if we're going to be talking about how we have vacant vacant properties we need filled downtown, why don't we do away with some of the government regulations and try to get businesses that way? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item in the room? Is there any public comment online? You can raise your virtual hand, and Sheri will find you. Aaron Radine?
Hi, yeah. Thanks for calling on me. I just want to say strongly for the initiation of this amendment and moving forward to discuss it further. I think there's a lot of people that see the value in adjusting the city code and making things a little bit more flexible for our downtown businesses that do a really excellent job of bringing people into Lawrence from outside, and just really bringing a new life to the downtown area. So I myself and many people that I've talked to are, we'd be very much in for of moving forward with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment online? Dante Colombo?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much for considering this amendment. I am actually in Chicago currently. I was not aware that this would be happening today until a little bit earlier today, so I apologize for not being there in person. But I do just want to say that we, of course, are strongly in favor of moving forward with the initiation of this text amendment. For context, I am the general manager of the business who put forth this amendment. And again, we really appreciate y'all's time. We, like Aaron said, you know, you know, believe strongly that, you know, this should be considered further. And of course, you know, like I said in the meeting a few weeks ago, we are not by any means, you know, suggesting that this law be done away with entirely. This would just be to add a very, very narrow variance to the law to, like, we believe, like, maintain alignment with the original intention of the law. And again, like, this would not be like a, like, drastic change by any means. In fact, quite the opposite. So I would really, really enjoy having the time to, you know, talk with public about this, talk with other stakeholders downtown, and with you commissioners, and kind of move forward with getting more information and answering your questions. So if we could, you know, just move forward with this and move it to the next stage of the process, I would love to kind of like continue the dialogue and make it very clear that we are, you know, in support of all that Lawrence, you know, is, and all the lovely businesses downtown and maintaining the integrity of downtown. So thank you so much again.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
That's all the comments, Mayor.
Great. Let's bring it back to the commission. Any discussion or comments? I didn't intend to pull this. I was trying to, you know, because it's a text amendment, and I'm sure we all read it, it's very specific. As one of our commenters pointed out, when I thought about the discussions we've had in the past about how this might come up and be revisited by the public, I was hoping for robust public engagement. But being that it's coming to us as a text amendment, that isn't necessarily how it would play out. So maybe I'll ask the city manager, you know, we're going to approve this presumably, and in its narrow scope, it'll go to planning. But planning doesn't usually make a suggestion like, hey, let's do public engagement on this, not just this specific suggestion, but this whole issue. So I wonder how we can, I will say another thing, since the chair of the new code revision committee is here next to me. I also thought it may come up then, maybe not specifically to do with development, but still in the code, and something that has come up several times. So how could we, I guess, I guess I'm ready to hear it, I'm ready to see it, and I'm ready to have a real conversation with the community about it, but coming this way in a text amendment, that's not really the direction it's going. What are your thoughts about how we could expand the scope of it?
City Manager Craig Owens, I think you hit on both of the two points where I would approach it. One, this is fairly narrow scope request that's fairly pointed and fairly immediate. So while we typically don't see a lot on some, a lot of public interest and engagement on text amendments, depending on what they are, and we may not hear, I think the broader scope that you're looking at with the development code revisions would be a place where we could comprehensively look at and see if this is something that could be done. One thing, you know, we're typically sensitive to is that we give an assurance of the same process for every applicant. So if somebody's applied to go through a process, it should be about the same process of other applicants. So I would be a little reticent to throw a lot more process that's unusual into an applicant's way, if you will, but you eventually will see it here, and that's a place where it could get more exposure and perhaps more participation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But that also brings up a concern maybe I had. Of course, we have no control over what dialogue the Planning Commission has. I would be concerned that, in the specificity, it might not do well when the Planning Commission might be happy to have a broader conversation, and then a message might be sent that we're not interested, when really what we want is a bigger conversation. So I don't know, Commissioner Finkel, do you have any, I just, I don't want a message to be sent that we're not interested in talking about it if it's too narrow, when we really want to have a bigger conversation with the community.
I guess my thought process would be, the code allows three people to initiate text amendments, the city commission, the planning commission, or an applicant. And so this is, I mean, you know, a homeowner, so this is an applicant who is making a text amendment. So a little bit like Craig said, I'm a little curious, you know, I don't want to mess up that process that we go through. But the flip side would be is we could initiate a text amendment, you know, now or next week, you know, I mean, to initiate a text amendment on that entire section and have that looked at. Now, that being said, we are looking at the entire development code, so you have to question whether or not we want to have that question now, or as part of the bigger discussion. But I guess, I think that would be the process. Initiate this one as it exists, and then we need to decide, do we want to initiate a greater one or not? We could certainly do that.
Any other conversation?
Well, we're also going to be looking at some of this during the development code review.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where I would see that. I'm always hesitant about not allowing a process to follow through. This has been set up in a very specific way to allow the community or us or planning to actually look at a text amendment. So I would be inclined to allow this to go through the process, just like we let everybody else go through the process.
But do you have any thoughts about expanding the discussion?
Not in this specific one. I think that could be a future or a broader elsewhere, but I would just focus on what the applicant has asked for here, and then let it go through that process.
I'm with me. I just wanted to know a little bit more about it.
Commissioner Sellers, any thoughts?
I do, but I don't have the issue with the text amendment. I think Commissioner Finkel has laid it out as best as anyone could in this situation. For me, to his point, if we wanted to initiate a text amendment or open up chapter 20 and look at it more thoroughly and do something like that, then we have the authority to do that, and we could add that to it. But I think we're doing this a little bit prudently. I think we should allow for the initiation of the text amendment, let planning make their regards and recommendations. It still comes back to us to make the decision, which I still have, which I can address that then. Any concerns I had with what was provided to us, this was not the time. I didn't feel like it was the time for us to bring it up, because, again, it's the process, and we have to trust the process. So I see where you're coming from, Mayor. Unfortunately, I don't think this is the path for us to take. I think if we can continue to bring it up in the steering committee, that would be one. Or again, once we allow that process to go through, and we feel like it needs to be revisited, then we can do there. That's the process I'm used to professionally, and that would be the process I recommend. It doesn't negate us from being able to have public engagement. It just finds a better time and more fruitful time for it to happen. If you want to look at it in its whole context, not just within its narrow piece.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I was getting at. I just don't want to, again, it's come up several times in different situations, and I didn't, I just didn't want the message to be sent to the public that there's disinterest because we haven't figured out how to prioritize it in the moment. So thank you both for helping me contextualize that a little bit, hopefully for the public to understand. I think there's a lot of interest in having that discussion. Is there any motions, so we can move on?
I move to initiate text amendment TA 22249 to chapter 20 of the C of Lawrence Code to modify standards pertaining to eating and drinking establishments.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five to zero. The next item, which was removed, was C6F.
Hi, my name is Michael. I pulled this mainly just because it shouldn't pass by on a consent agenda without some attention to it. In a time where we're stressing budgets, and we're sending out budget-neutral notifications, I got mine that indicates that I'm going to be paying hundreds more under this program. Businesses are going to be paying thousands more, and we have one of the larger developers and larger management companies for apartments coming in here wanting economic incentives to develop their own corporate headquarters. If they want economic incentives to redevelop some areas that are dilapidated in town, you know, for apartments, things like that, that's much more appropriate. But for their own corporate headquarters, I find that to be a little unseemly.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment in the room on this item?
Good evening. I'm Brady Sutton. I'm with First Management and First Construction. This is actually just asking for a recommendation that this be referred to the Public Incentive Review Committee and to NDC for further analysis as to whether Review Committee and to NDC for further analysis as to whether or not this is appropriate request. So it's not actually, we're not actually asking the city to make any decisions other than to refer it on for further investigation and potential approval down the road.
Thank you. Oh, we lost one. Is there any further public comment on this item? Oh, I see someone.
Well, I'll just say, I'm Amy. I live in Lawrence. Don't raise the taxes for big businesses on these, us little people, please. I came and spoke last week about the taxes and please don't raise the taxes anymore. We're already drowning here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's make sure there's no comment online. If you have any comments online, please raise your hand. There's no comments, Mayor. All right, let's bring it back to the commission. Any discussion?
I just say, I think it's like the last item. It's the process. So we follow the process. Whether or not, you know, how it ends, we'll find out later.
This just provides an opportunity for it to move forward through our process. And it still has to go through quite a bit of review before an incentive is even given or considered. So, and then it will eventually come back to us for a final vote. So this and our vote today is by no means saying that we think that this should happen. We just want to make sure that it has an opportunity to go through the process like anybody else would have that opportunity. So.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Thank you to our public commentators. It, it, I'm always happy to see people seeing these things go by in a new way or having seen them for the first time in the processes. The Vice Mayor points out, which means there are multiple steps where people can come in or get involved, not just at this body, but other bodies. So thank you for showing up. Do I have any motions?
I move that we receive the request from First Management, Inc. for economic assistance to redevelop the property at 700 New Hampshire Street in Lawrence, Kansas. Thank you. Refer the request to staff for analysis and then refer the request to the Public Incentives Review Committee PERC for review and recommendation and to set October 4, 2022 as the date for a public hearing on the NRA and revitalization plan.
Second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five to zero. That concludes our consent agenda, which brings us to public comments. Are there any public commenters in the room?
Want me to read the whole thing?
Oh, I'm sorry. The public is allowed to speak on items or issues that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Individuals should address all comments and questions to the commission. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Anyone in the room interested in public, general public comment this week?
My name is Joe Herring. What I'm about to share are my opinions. I would ask that you do not believe anything I say. However, I hope to rouse your curiosity whereby you do your own research. There are 13 bloodline families that control everything. Rothschilds, Onassis, Rockefeller, DuPont, and other powerful families control all the puppets below them. They don't need money because they can print their own. Their main profit centers include financing both sides of war, human trafficking, and drugs. These people are evil monsters that will do anything to stay in power, including sacrificing human life. They are the masters of keeping the masses in fear in order to, to retain control. This is accomplished by creating a problem and then offering a solution. MK Ultra was a Nazi mind control apparatus that came to our shores after World War II and fell into hands of evildoers within our own government. MK Ultra gave birth to present day mass formation psychosis. Our TAC dollars were used to create SARS-CoV-2 virus in a lab in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. This highly transmissible virus was outsourced to Wuhan, China, where it was combined with a bat virus that created the disease COVID-19 and was then released on the human population. Groupthink, known as mass formation psychosis, drove the masses to line up for experimental gene therapy shots. At the same time, a minority of doctors were developing effective prophylactic therapies that were saving lives and keeping people out of the hospital. These doctors and proven drugs such as ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine were censored by mainstream media because they did not follow the evildoers' agenda. Free speech and open scientific debate were completely censored. It is my opinion that history will record COVID-19 scam as the most dangerous and deadly biologic ever released on the human population. I challenge each of you to prove me wrong. If I'm proven wrong, I will be the first one to celebrate. Thank you.
My name is Dan Katy. I spent the weekend talking to my neighbors. I said, what are your concerns? I said, I'm going to the city hall. Ask, tell me what your concerns are. Right now, inflation is hitting people hard. I talked to people on fixed incomes, people with small children, families. They're getting their tax evaluations, their personal property tax, and it's going up. Twenty to thirty percent for most people. And they said, you know, I'm on a fixed income. I don't get a raise. Inflation hurts me more than it does people that are working. Of course, a lot of people are working, can't just go in and say, give me a raise. Give me a raise. You know, my taxes are going up. Give me a raise. How's that work? Well, it doesn't. Utilities are going up. I saw on the news today that electricity's going to be up over six percent. Everything's going up. So what can the city do? I've got some ideas. How about doing away with the recycling program or make it optional? So if somebody wants to do it and can afford it, they can do it. But if, but if they don't want to do it or can't afford it, then don't do it. If the recycling was such a good thing, somebody would be doing it to make money. Alls it's doing is sucking money from the taxpayers. And then, then we get, we get into food. Food prices are up twenty percent. If you, if you don't know that, you don't go to the grocery store. And then you're paying ten percent tax on that. What about, what about taking the tax down for people? Then the other thing is, I see a lot of pet projects out there. You know, let's, let's do something for climate change. The people I talk to don't care about climate change. They care about how, how they're going to afford their housing here. You talk about affordable housing. How about making housing affordable for those people on a fixed income, for the parents with four kids? Let's make it affordable for them. You're smart enough to figure out ways to do that. I hope you are, and I hope you care enough to do that. I'm not counting on it, but do something. Be creative.
My name is Linda Campbell. I have lived and worked in Lawrence all my life. I was recently elected to represent my fellow Republicans in my precinct, and I am here to object to your proposal to raise our taxes. People have always come to this country to escape tyranny. They were seeking liberty and freedom. Freedom is what God gives to each of us. I am here to say that you are not serving me. You are serving and feeding the beast of big government. Raising our taxes is only removing more freedom from the citizens of Lawrence. These are difficult days financially for all citizens, and you should be working for us, not big government. And you should be working to cut the size of government and cut our taxes. Thank you.
It is as easy as saying, prices have gone up, give me a raise, because that's basically what you guys are doing to us. And we don't really have a choice, other than to come in here and call it out. And in another direction, I want to tell all those people that are trying to work so hard to turn me into some kind of threat, it's not going to work. I don't know if the commissioners are familiar what red flag laws are, but that's what's happening. Lawrence Police Department is going to try to red flag me now, calling me a threat because I'm out there filming a stop and an officer is going to exaggerate his fear because I have a weapon. Kansas is a constitutional carry state. We've been through the fact that I can record the police. We've been through the fact that I can ridicule them. There's a lot of things that have happened that I don't come in here and publicly speak of that a few of you are aware of. And it's scary, the kind of crap they're trying to But I'm that fearless guy that they're not going to do this to. And if it ends up that I have to take a bullet because one of them pulls his gun because he thinks something's going on that isn't, I'm not going to provoke that. But if it happens, it's okay, because it'll be my last act of accountability. I'm not a danger. And for every one of you to try to turn us into a danger when we're upset with government, the CPRB meeting this past time had a meeting about their security. There has been no security threat to anybody. We've not threatened anybody's existence. I've let people know there's clear lines between what I do and what's acceptable and what's not. I don't mess with you people at home. I don't even know where some of you live. I could probably easily find out, but that's not a priority. Because when you go home, that's your private time. When you're in here and you're a public servant, that's my time. When I'm a citizen and I have issues. And I view it the same with the police. I have major issues with a number of officers. Do I go looking for where they live? Do I go stalking them? No. I catch them when they're out on patrol, stopping cars and legally film them like I'm legally constitutionally allowed to do. But now they're going to try to red flag me and call me a threat. I put up a recent video this morning that shows exactly what happened. It's about 20 minutes of an officer acting like he's afraid. He's got to get behind his car away from me. He calls in backup and a sergeant for a stop that's already completed. He could have just gotten his car and left. He could have stayed in his car and pulled over into a parking lot. But instead, he got out and tried to create a threat that did not exist. And they're trying to document a threat that does not exist. I caution you, if they come in here trying to say that there's a threat that exists from me, that does not.
Any further public comment? General public comment?
Hello, Michelle Eagleman. Inflation measured by the Fed's preferred gauge, Personal Consumption Expenditures Price Index, PCE, was running close to seven percent in June. I believe it's higher this month. With prices for everything from gasoline to groceries having risen at a torrid pace over the past 12 months, Bloomberg Economics calculates the average US household faces an inflation tax for 2022 of $5,200. And real incomes are not keeping up. Average people have been losing ground for the last 16 months. That's from Bloomberg. When I heard the city and the county, by the way, were planning on increasing taxes, I was dumbfounded. There couldn't be a worse time. Utilities, housing, infrastructure, Panasonic, you all have quite a wish list. Some of these are real problems, but more money isn't the answer to them, and this is not the time. There are things that you want to do, but as adults, we prioritize. Some things can be done, some things have to wait, and some things will never happen because economics is a study of scarce resources that have alternative uses. When I go to the store, I can only spend so much. When the money's gone, it's gone. I can't go rob my neighbor. I have to stop when the money's gone. Thankfully, a man in my precinct alerted me to this plan, these planned increases in taxes, and I went around my neighborhood. I too am a precinct person. I've never been involved before, but I'm getting involved because these are ridiculous things are happening. I went to 75 doors and I got some feedback. Are you surprised that no one's excited about a tax increase and no one felt it was justified? Here are some things that they said. Wow, they're really getting greedy. Lawrence is going to end up like Boulder, Colorado. No one can afford to live there but the super rich. That makes me mad. People voted no on a new police station, and they managed to build it anyway. They had enough to spend over $300,000 on a statue to go in front of the new police station. They build expensive schools, renovate them, and now they're empty. These things seriously call your priorities into question. Today, we have the highest inflation since the 80s. Charging taxes at a time when foreclosures and evictions are soaring, housing, energy, food prices are soaring, really shows you don't have the skills, the character, or the courage to represent the people of this town. If the money's not there, you tighten the belt, find a way, make a way like we do every day. We need problem solvers. People can meet the budget and payroll, not teenagers who come begging for more money.
Public comment?
My name is Dr. Justin Spees. I'm running for County, Douglas County Commissioner in District One. I'm running as a Republican. And I think those are really good ideas you guys are coming up with there. As County Commissioner, there are things that, that I'm going to stand for, and this is what I'm going to do. I'm not going to vote to raise taxes. I'm just not going to do it. I think that money needs to be in your pocket. And I think a lot of stuff needs to be cut as well. So looking at the county budget and proposed budget, there's a lot of money that's just sitting there in like miscellaneous expenditures labeled as miscellaneous. We're talking tens of millions of dollars. So as County Commissioner, I go in there and be like, well, what is this all about? Can you tell us what this is all about? And start cutting it. Seems shady. I also think that they spend too much on behavioral health. And behavioral health is just a fancy current word for mental health. I'm trained as a marriage and family therapist, master addiction counselor. I've taught all kinds of counseling classes. This is the behavioral health is mental health. And I got a question, do we need to be taking our taxes and paying for, for behavioral health at all? And to the level that the county is funding, it's millions of dollars. So I'd simply just ask, is, is what we're doing with all this money, is it effective? Are we just throwing money at something because it makes us feel better? As long as we're throwing money at it, it seems like it should be doing some. I, I think it's a lot of wasteful spending. I think that money is going in there and it's, it's not helping people the way that it's, I guess, intended to be helped. So why would we keep throwing money at it? So we gotta, we gotta start asking, are we enabling people in, in our mental health facilities? Or are we helping them? And I think we've got to redefine what, what we mean by help. And if we're enabling them, we're just going to keep throwing more and more of our money at it, and we're going to keep paying for it. And I don't think we should be able to do that. I also think there's a lot of redundancy in the government here, the local government, a lot of redundancy. The government is too big around here. And that's what you get with, with liberal commies. You're going to have a big government. But, you know, back to the city, for example, we have a, we have a city manager here. And then last week, we had an assistant city manager here as well. And it's like, why are we paying for both of these here? And it's not just here. Go look at the county budget. There's a lot of redundancy in there. And you go, well, what are we paying, what are we paying all this for? So I think there's some things that we can cut out of there and get money back into your pockets. The other things, I'm not going to stand for any more mandates, no more medical tyranny, whatever you guys are planning, whatever comes down to pike. I'm not going to stand for it. You, you guys are adults. You, you, you citizens out there, you're adults. You make your own decisions for you and your family. And lastly, I'm not going to put up with any more of this bullshit. And it all goes to. So consider voting for me. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Amy, again, Lawrence, Kansas. I would just like to say, if you guys could please just pay attention. I don't know what you're working on up there, but these people came here to talk to you and tell you how they feel. And I think that recycling is just thrown back in the trash from what I understand. It's all mixed together at the end anyways. And if you guys could like, all the taxes got raised on people's houses. If you own a house, you had to pay more taxes. Maybe if somebody owns like they're a rental person, you know, landlord, you could like give them a deal or something. The taxes 10%. I mean, imagine that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Linda Weinmaster. And I wish we could get a little more deal detail on some of the spending. Like I'd like to know what the cost per ridership of the bus is. I pass these buses all day long and there's never anybody in them but the driver. I know that will change with the students back, but that's got to be a huge expense. The Riverfront Project, details on that. The golf course, the artwork, the Green New Ideas. Can't we hold the line during this recession? Everybody is struggling right now. My husband and I are retired. We're like, great. We've watched our taxes go up and we had moved away for a while, but 84% increase in taxes in about 26 years. It's insane. Where is this money going? A bunch of pet projects, a bunch of, of an agenda that really doesn't fit the needs of the majority of this community. We need to get back to the basics. And as I've said before, I'm one of the privileged because I get to pay for Queens Road and I've never driven on it once in my lifetime. And there are some things in there, it is illegal for this to be going on. And I can't get any answers on, on some of the legalities, but there are some illegal parts of this. And I guess maybe we get to reorganize those of us lucky taxpayers out there that are going to get slammed again. Thank you.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers. I've been hearing people saying we're spending too much and I kind of agree, but no one's mentioning the police budget. Like, let's, let's cut some spending. And I say, let's start with the drug dogs. Why, I don't think we need them. And there is a, an article in the paper the other week, how someone donated, I guess, vests for the dogs to protect them. But why are we putting innocent animals in the way, like in danger where we need to equip them with vests to keep them from getting stabbed or shot? I mean, I, I, I am completely against using animals, you know, to put them in danger. And where, and what, what's the reason? So they can sniff out drugs? Like, I, I don't think that's a good reason to be risking a dog's life. And if some, some of you portray yourselves as progressive, but isn't the progress, one of the progressive things is we need to spend less on police. So if some of you, like, there's an election coming up next summer that maybe some of y'all will be part of it. If I, I don't know if I'll run, but if I do run, I will definitely be, be trying to get rid of those drug dogs. And I, I think we need to be reducing spending on the police. And if any of you want to portray yourselves as progressive, you need to start questioning how much we're spending on the police. And also, I mean, the Republicans should be okay with it. They're here saying we need to spend less money, like spend less money, but do it the Democrat way. Thank you.
Any other public comment? General public comment? Items not on the agenda later? Okay, is there anyone on?
Oh, no, my time starts.
You're ready when you start.
Give me one second. So go ahead. I'd like to talk about just the general tax levels, especially the property taxes, among other things. When you restrict the flow of the ability of the people to own their own property and pursue their own dreams and goals, you reduce their ability to have upward momentum and trajectory. Our founding fathers talked this subject to death when it came to the, the Great Britain at the time with the restriction of the flow through road tolls. They thought that was vociferously ridiculous because it reduced the amount of money that the actual government made itself. So when you understand this basic concept, you know that the money flowing through your pockets to there and push back into the community to uplift it is less. So when you constrict it like a boa constrictor, you don't get more money out of it, you get less money out of it. So I urge you to think about this basic concept. Also want you to think about the basic concept of just the general idea of faction. Because what you see here is a bunch of people that are upset about different things. But the one thing they have in common is money. It's really hard right now for people to make amends, make things make sense in their pocketbook. One of the things that the founding fathers talked about specifically, you don't even have to agree with them at all. And in fact, I think they missed something in this, but this is still one of my personal beliefs that Federalist Papers Number 10 is one of the most amazing political writings in human history. Y'all need to read it. I'm not saying you should read it, you have to read it. Please, I plead with you to read it thoroughly and then open your mind and understand what James Madison was trying to point out. Because trying to control the causes of faction is how you maintain government. It's also how you maintain peace. You have to think, you have to take these things into account. Otherwise, I personally don't know what y'all are doing. One of the things it says, just so you can get this in your head, so you actually like, this is good. There are two methods. This is what James Madison says in the Federalist Papers Number 10. It's one of the most important lines, in my opinion. There are two methods of curing the misuse of faction. One, by removing its causes. The other, by controlling its effects. There are again, two methods of removing the causes of faction. One, by destroying the liberty, which is essential to its existence. The other, by giving every citizen the same opinions, the same passions, and the same interests. It could never be more truly said than of the first remedy, that it was worse than a disease. Liberty is to faction what air is to fire, an element without which it instantly expires. But it could not be less folly to abolish liberty, which is essential to political life. Because it nurses faction, it would be to wish the annihilation of air, essential to animal life. Because in parts of fire, it's destructive agency. The fire of all the people. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room? Is there any public comment, general public comment online? You can raise your virtual hand. That's all the public comment, Mayor. All right, thank you. Let's move on to our work session. The work session provides an opportunity for the city commission to discuss items in greater detail. As a general practice, the commission will not make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff or follow up if necessary. Work session topics are eligible for live public comment. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Our first item is to receive the strategic plan update from the Connected City outcome team.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jessica Mortenger and I'm the Transportation Planning Manager for the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I'm here this evening with Adam Weigel from Lawrence Transit. And we're members of the Connected City Lawrence Strategic Plan Team. And we're here to share a little bit of work that we've been working on under the commitments areas that we have committed to in the strategic plan. We're going to be talking about multimodal connectivity tonight as it, as we relate to thinking about accessibility and safety and also thinking a little bit about the sustainability of that. The Connected City performance measures, there's 14 of them. We're going to highlight two of those this evening for you. We're going to share some preliminary information with you around resident satisfaction with transportation experiences by mode and talk a little bit about city energy used in fleet. As we think about the resident satisfaction with transportation services, that really falls under two of our commitment areas. The first of which is community engagement. And we're sharing with you data that was collected at parts of different public processes. And also some of the values and work we're doing around equity and inclusion, thinking about some of the most vulnerable people in our community and the transportation assets that serve them. We have tonight, you haven't seen all of the ETC stuff, but we got the preliminary data. So we can show you this compared to the Transportation 2050 Lawrence data sets as we talk about how people have scored each of their modes of transportation with their satisfaction. And we're going to talk a little bit about that in regard to multimodal infrastructure and services and activities that we're working on. What you see here is assigned scores for the rating of satisfaction from the ETC survey. There's different level of responses on the right. You'll see the number of responses because not every respondent responded to every mode. Some chose don't know, and we didn't include those in the average scores because it has no value. But we show you there on the right, the average scores by mode, the highest mode satisfaction being auto, followed by ped, followed by transit, and then lastly bike. And that's a pretty similar distribution that we see in the Transportation 2050 scores for the Lawrence only values. And you can kind of see how that stratified across each of those categories by mode. Of course, there will be a lot of additional ETC values in data that gives us some indications about what are types of things that impact these scores. And we'll be looking to use those to understand where we move in some of the recommended strategies, both the city overall and also in our long range transportation planning. I've pulled out, so the ETC survey is your statistically valid survey. The transportation planning process also does community engagement work where we have selected, self-selected participants. And so this is from the efforts that staff have done tabling and collecting surveys. And you can see here again, the number of respondents vary by mode based on what people have responded. You see a kind of similar distribution of scoring for satisfaction. In this case, the auto and ped are flipped. But we dive down a little bit deeper into this and we will continue to do so with the comments that we received as we do this planning work that we've kind of show you here to put together a picture of the top three reasons that people indicated for the dissatisfaction with each of these modes. And many of these things are common things that we hear as we do this work in our community. Items like incomplete networks, as we think about bicycle and pedestrian networks, challenges transporting children, large items, lack of amenities at bus, like bus shelters or benches, condition of roads, cost of all of these options and other safety considerations. So as you see, there's a lot here to unpack and we're starting to get a little into it as we talk just about some of the transit activities and the multimodal work that we'll begin to do. And I'll turn it over to Adam.
Yeah, so we'll talk through, as we saw in that last slide, some of the reasons why people find dissatisfaction with transit. We'll talk through some of the activities that we're doing with Lawrence Transit to try to address some of those concerns. So there's four that we want to focus on here that we're doing work on. Construction of the multimodal center, central station, route redesign, fare free service, and improving bus stops. First three of those activities are grouped together. They do have some relation. So the construction of Central Station is the first step that needs to happen for routes to be fully redesigned. So we do have our first set of route changes that's gone into effect this fall, this August. But we'll have another set come into effect when Central Station comes online. You see our anticipated opening of that. So on 2023, we're looking at Q2 or Q3 at this time as we move through, through that process, but trying to push as, as fast as we can. I include fare free on this particular slide because that is related to when you do some major changes, particularly in your routes. There's some pain with that, with that change and trying to get people used to that new system. Fare free is one of those tools you can use to make that an easier transition for people. We're also using it for other reasons, drive up ridership, you know, trying to get people in more sustainable modes of transportation. But it does relate with our work related to Central Station and routes. Bus stops. So we've, we've done a lot of work over the last couple of years with bus stop improvements. There are 376 total bus stops. You see some of the breakdown of how many stops are ADA compliant, have shelters, benches, bike racks. There are a number of different ways that we improve bus stops. We do have an annual programmed amount that we put in our operational budget of 150,000. Has been standard over the last about five years. There are a number of other ways though, that we try to leverage existing process to improve stops. So there's competitive grant awards. I list the K dot AIC, which we recently were awarded for 152,000. That will go towards bus stop improvements likely in this next calendar year. There's also a number of projects that come through both MSO and planning. So when we do a regular street maintenance in the summer, we take advantage of those concrete and asphalt trucks that are already out in certain areas and at least get ADA compliance at the stops along those roadways. We do a similar thing with any discreet street or sidewalk project. So some of the work happening on 23rd and 19th Street, those will get bus stops improved at the same time as that street work as well as private development. So things that come through the planning process, we ask developers, is there improving sites that are near bus stops to help us with the concrete work and we follow on with, with amenities.
Our strategic plan strategy really speaks to how we should prioritize our investments with the emphasis on pedestrian and bicycle demand. So thinking about where these, this infrastructure will be most used and transportation disadvantaged populations. And what it means to be transportation disadvantaged. We have done some national research to look at kind of best practices around data-driven processes to understand how people access and use transportation, particularly multimode. So if you think about walking or biking or transit. And there's some demographic categories that nationally have trends that people who are in these population categories often are likely to experience disadvantages with vehicle ownership or single occupant vehicle ownership or multiple vehicles in a household. And so we've taken these demographic categories and explored them across our block groups in the city of Lawrence. And don't, you don't have to memorize these, it's just to show you the background, the methodology that's used. But we've calculated the average value for the entire city, which you see in the average column. And then we've assigned a point structure based on the percentage of people within that block group that meet that criteria when it, where it exceeds the average. And so the higher the percentage of people who meet that category or to exceed the average, get a higher point score. We add all of those up and we give you this graphic, which is our transportation disadvantaged population scoring. This may look familiar to you. We've started to work with the Multimodal Transportation Commission to use this map when we're talking about how we weight different elements of prioritization that's happened. So an example of that is sidewalk improvement and selecting areas for the next year's program. Additionally, you see this in the conversation around the bike ped selection of projects for the non-motorized prioritization. And there's some weighting in that consideration that considers prioritizing projects based on some of these, these disadvantages. When we think about the other side of that key, which is the demand portion, we have built some data-driven models to understand selecting routes to act to priority community destinations. And this is, this is paired with transportation disadvantage, but gives you an idea to show you again, how we're doing that for sidewalk improvement to meet the commitment that we're talking about in our strategic plan. So this should also look familiar. The red is our highest pedestrian demand. The green is the lower location. So as we're talking about where we're prioritizing sidewalk improvement and gap infill, there's consideration for doing that in the areas where we believe there's the highest existing and latent demand for pedestrian activity. Bikeway demand is similar. So as we think about this, we're thinking about potential trips. So pro- proximity to destinations and the weights according to proximity in terms of ease of bicycling, this is really about latent demand. This is something that's in the Lawrence Bikes Plan. And it's not necessarily to project existing trips, but it's to show us where there's the greatest potential based on density in our community and those destinations. And this this demand model is also used with the Multimodal Transportation Commission for non-motorized prioritization of bikeways. And so you can understand the value as we talk about transportation disadvantaged populations and people who are using these modes of transportation, that connectivity and safety is really important. And so as we look at implementing projects, we want to connect networks and do that with infrastructure that's safely designed. And so these are some of the tools we're doing to meet the commitments of our strategic plan to achieve some of this work. Additionally, with our commitments to equity inclusion and community engagement, we are in the process of updating the Long Range Transportation Plan, currently called Transportation 2040 to Transportation 2050. This plan serves as Chapter Five of Plan 2040. It is the transportation chapter of our comprehensive plan. It's also federally required that we update this plan every five years to maintain our requirements to receive all of the federal money that we receive for transportation around transit and road and bridges and bike and ped. It covers 20 years, and it has a bunch of considerations that we go through in this process. And we're currently in this process. And so with our commitments to thinking about these things, the public input, the component of this that I spoke a little bit about that survey earlier, it actually has, it's very extensive. There's a lot more reporting that we'll still be able to do as we work through with what we heard from the community to develop the strategies and activities in this plan that support the goals in the region. This is where we're at in the process, and we're getting ready to go back out in the next probably month with some of the summaries of all of our existing conditions and the summary of that public engagement report to our T2040 Steering Committee as we work through the development of this plan. But it is aligned with the other planning work that exists in the city. Turn it back over to Adam.
So we've been talking about CC2 related to people's satisfaction levels. We're going to pivot to the second progress indicator that we wanted to highlight, which is CC12 related to renewable energy. This is focused on fleet. So wanted to start out with our current data and what that's looking like over the 2021, 22, and 23 years. You can see that across our vehicle fleet, a lot is both gas and diesel. You can see the wedge of electric start to come out a little bit. That's shows some of our electric buses that we've been able to procure over the last couple of years. Exciting to announce that we also got a third straight grant just announced officially today by FTA. So we'll be getting four more vehicles in 2024. So our next pie chart should wedge out a little bit more. And we'll talk at the end of the presentation about kind of our strategies moving forward. So the couple of activities I want to highlight are a couple of transition plans. I'll talk about why there's a difference between the Lawrence Transit Zero Emission Plan versus the city overall. They'll certainly be related and connected. To set the stage on the progress for transit, we do have some hybrid vehicles in the fleet that we've had for quite a while. We had three in 2011, an additional in 2015. All those four buses are still running, getting close to the end of useful life, but still running. We have five electric buses that are just about in service right now. We do have them on site. We have a couple additional technology pieces to get in there before they can get out on daily routes. But we do expect that to happen right at the end of this month or beginning of September. We have been awarded two electric buses for the following year. 2023 is when those will show up, probably around summertime. And then we were just awarded four additional just recently. So those will arrive the year after that. It's about a two-year process from that award to us working through all the procurement and modeling and planning for getting those on site. Looking at that success so far, I think we're surprised and happy at our ability to tell our story, but certainly the ordinance that we have that pushes us towards all-electric operations by 2035 helps us in that storytelling. I think if we can keep telling that story, we should be well on track from the transit side of things to be close to meeting that goal, for able to, every year, every other year, get federal money to help us along that capital cost. So with transit, we have some unique access to some different competitive grant programs. So that is the primary reason why you see two different transition plans in different columns here. We were fortunate to win $150,000 through KDOT, through the AIC program for a transition plan. So that'll help us get a consultant-led project. Hope to start work on that at the end of this year, probably early next year is when that really gets going, to set us up for what it looks like long-term for us. You know, we're up to 11 buses with the grants we've won. Our pilot area, if you will, out in the joint maintenance facility that we operate with KU has space for 12. So we're butting up right against that. We need to know what it looks like for us to get to 50 buses to 100 buses between us and the university fleet. And that's a whole different animal. So that that plan will really help us with that. City overall is also pursuing a zero emission transition plan. A lot about fleet, but not completely focused on fleet. It does have additional scope related to buildings and other things. So that contract finalization is coming up. It's looking like it is likely to be under 100,000 with the scope. So one of the things I'll be interested in hearing from you all tonight is if that's something that you all want to see, because with that threshold, it wouldn't typically come to this body. And in talking with MSO on the way that fleet transition will look, really 2025 is when they're anticipating being able to start moving through that process, you know, having the plan in place to be able to procure the right chargers and vehicles and not get too far out ahead of skis. So that'll be one of the questions we ask towards the end of the presentation, as well as just the approach as we lead up to the full development of these plans.
As we continue conversations with the community about their satisfaction for multimodal improvements, there have been historically, and I think there are going to continue to be conversations and challenges where we have to face trade-offs for advancing bicycle, pedestrian, or transit spaces. And that may require the reduction of space and/or convenience for personal automobiles. And that's a lot of the focus of some of the things we want you to begin your thought process about that we're going to kind of present to you this evening. As we look to Plan 2040 and our goals for increased density, we need to think about the need to efficiently move people and in the same amount of space, how we do that. And so I have a few examples for you where I've presented you with some ideas and pictures to give you the concept, what we're talking about when we come to project by project selection. If we think about limited space and funding and community goals, when we think about moving quantities of people, thinking about how modes should be prioritized, thinking about safety, access, and comfort. We've given you an example here on the left from the National Association of City Transportation Officials that shows a protected cycle track, two-way cycle track, and an example of where in our community, you can see here that space is currently occupied by parked cars in our downtown. And so this is just one kind of example as we start to think about the value of moving people and how we can do that in our space, some of the trade-offs that we're going to be faced with. Equally, here is an example of a downtown bus stop. On the right, circled in yellow, you can see the bus stop sign. You can imagine for people who are choosing this location to board or alight the bus, they have to navigate the parked cars that are here. This poses challenges to accessibility and comfort and safety. And here's an example on the left that shows you an example of what that space, had it been instead prioritized for people who ride the bus, what that may look like as an example. And this just presents you with a few examples that we think are going to be pressing in the future as we continue to talk about how all of the modes share the space that we have in our streetscape. We talk about increasing capacity. Here is a diagram that shows you the per-hour rates of volume that each of the modes can put through the same space. And so you can see at the very top of the pyramid is private motor vehicles. So if you think about single-occupant vehicles, and as you keep mixing down with some buses, and then if you think about bikeways and dedicated transit lanes and sidewalk, some of those may or may not be appropriate on different scales in different streets in our community. It's not every street that would be that conversation, but it's thinking about what is the community tolerance as we work to achieve some of these visions around safety, accessibility, and comfort for trading off for comfort and access for automobiles. And here's the last question. It separates the topic, those three. We're all kind of together thinking about some of those examples. But with the plan to develop these zero emission transit plans, both citywide and for transit, those may not be prepared for the next one or two budget cycles. And without those finalized plans, how should vehicle procurement be approached in this interim way if we don't have the infrastructure or the known needs of what we're going to need in terms of being able to charge and operate those? So just kind of talking about that a little bit and what the reality of that may be as we incorporate that into the workload. That's kind of what we have for you this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions or discussion you may have about the work that we're doing under Connected City. Any questions?
Just a couple questions. Adam, I'll start with you. Just on the, I assume each bus stop is different, but when we talk about 150,000 a year and in building a bus stop, how many is that? How many are we talking?
Yeah, it is different. We've been able to, the last couple of years, program between 15 and 20 is what that seems to get us with some higher-priced stops where they have major retaining walls and things like that that can really drive up the cost. You know, we're trying to tailor each stop based on its context, what destination is it serving, as well as the ridership that we see there. So not every stop is getting a shelter. Sometimes we are just doing an ADA boarding pad to make sure it's accessible. Sometimes it's a bench, a shelter. So it depends, but right around 15 or 20 is about what our operational program affords us each year.
And when we make the ultimate, you know, after the central stations open, are you going to see additional bus stops, same number of bus stops, less bus stops? Or do we know yet? I assume you know.
That's a good question. We have staff working through that right now and mapping all of that out, because specific bus stop placement was not something we did through the route redesign process. We needed to get routes defined first, and then we go through very specifically and look at the right spots for access. It's looking like it probably will increase. We're not sure by how much, but we're probably looking at an increase there.
And then last question for you. Oh, is the, I know I've read about the micro-transit program. Is that starting next year? Or is that still coming?
As part of the Phase Two, once we get that Central Station built, we'll introduce Sunday service in the form of micro-transit as well. So service on Sundays, the ability for people to request an on-demand trip either via an app or a phone call, that will start once we get all of Phase Two improvements through.
I'm pretty excited about that. So I wonder if it was mentioned here. But I also am excited about the fare-free. And then I guess this relates a little bit to the, I guess, both of you. I was surprised by that. I hadn't really thought too much about the downtown bus stops and how parking blocks them. Do we have, I mean, the exception of where we, you know, load the buses, all the other downtown, how many downtown bus stops do we have?
Between Vermont and New Hampshire, we have around 10 in the downtown area.
Do they all have parking in front of them?
Not all. Some are a little, some are different and unique, but several of them do. Yeah, it's a pretty typical setup, what was shown there.
Okay, I had, I saw that, and I hadn't spent much time thinking about that. We were just in Portland, and they had a, you know, they had a pretty nice setup downtown with each of their bus stops and had a kind of a theme going in the bus stops. And it seemed to add a lot. I think that is certainly something to consider. And then I guess, I had one other question, but now I forgot. Okay, I'll pass until I think of it.
I had a question about our fleet inventory. The pie charts you had, that represents the entire city fleet. Is that correct?
It does, yeah. So we're working with MSO to get all of the, any vehicle that will be driving on a city street. So it excludes things like forklifts and some other of our equipment that's not, it's not really in that fleet area. But the bigger equipment, you see street sweepers and snow plows, and that sort of stuff's all included, as well as the typical city fleet.
So if you just take the transit part, what percentage of that is electric now or hybrid electric?
So after next year, we'll have seven. That is about 30% of our fixed route fleet, about 23 fixed route vehicles. So we're getting, we're approaching that 40%, mark once we get all 11 here for the fixed route side, including our pair of transit, we're a fleet of about 50. It's about half and half fixed route and pair of transit vehicles. And the fixed route is really where we've been electrifying. The smaller vehicles, the cutaways, we call them, there's some range challenges with those right now. We are experimenting with those in the grant we just won. We're getting electric cutaways, so a shorter vehicle. The challenge is the smaller size, smaller area for battery packs, lower range currently. So that's really speeding up each year, but we wanted to get in the market, but we're probably not asking for 10 of those in the next couple of rounds. We're probably going to ease that in as range gets better.
Thanks. Yeah, and I want to thank you for that zero fare program. That's something that the commission has been asking for a couple of years, three, four, or five years now. So I'm glad to see we're giving it a go on that. So thank you.
Don't want to lose sight. I don't think I highlighted that in the presentation as much as I should, but you all approved that tonight as part of the consent agenda. So we'll start planning for 2023 to be fare-free across all services. And we'll reevaluate right about halfway through the year, see where things are at, if there's any pain points, and decide if we can find a way to continue it.
Any other questions?
Adam, real quick, a couple of questions. One, can you talk a little bit about, I was trying to remember when we met with you in regards to retrofitting some of the older buses and what that would look like. And I'm linking that in reference to the question that you asked about budget cycles and how do we transition to electric vehicles and so that piece. And then you talked a little bit about the shared facility with KU and where we are currently at with being able to accommodate an additional electric bus that would give us 12. At what point do we meet our capacity threshold there? And do we need to start looking at different facilities as it relates to us ramping up additional vehicles, retrofitting, changing them out, and expanding, possibly expanding routes?
Question. So, you know, a handful of years ago, there were already companies doing retrofit electric vehicles, taking a diesel bus and squeezing some batteries into it. The fair communities we've seen do that have had a lot of trouble with those, frequently in the shop and not out doing their work. So with our success with this program, with the LUNO program through FTA, I think we're hesitant to, we see more risk in that. And if we can continue to procure in this way, I think that's the direction we'll go. Now, if we miss out three years in a row, and we're starting to run buses past their 12-year useful life, by a couple of years, we'll have decisions to make. Do we buy fewer, all with cash? Do we try to do a cheaper retrofit and accept the risk that comes with it? But I think we'll cross some of that bridge when we come to it, if we can't win the new vehicles. As far as the joint facility, so like I said, by 2024, we'll be 11 vehicles. We only have program space for 12. It's a long, one long curve line. There is, you know, part of what the Zero Emission Transition Plan will help us figure out is KU does also have a strong interest in becoming zero emission as well. They have different challenges with accessing the funding to get those vehicles. They run charter service, which is not allowed by a recipient of federal funds, to run like a private service that's not fully public. So we have to be very transparent with FTA about how we use that joint facility and who uses what. So part of that transition plan will absolutely be, okay, we've kind of exhausted this pilot area. From the city, we want to keep moving. We don't want to be slowed down. From the city, we want to keep moving. We don't want to be slowed down. Where is the next place we can go?
Right.
Is it that we, that we come to an understanding agreement with FTA about how we use that existing site and we, and we do kind of build across the concrete that exists. There's an adjacent property that KU also owns. They're not using right now. I think discussions will be had about that and if that could be a potential area. Operationally, I think it'll be tough for us to look anywhere else in town. We would rather not do that because of the efficiencies that affords us to have all operational staff out there.
Anything else? Great, thank you. Let's make sure there's no public comment on this item. I'm seeing anyone. Is there any public comment online? No, ma'am. Okay, that brings us back to any discussion or? Hold on, Adam. Personally, I want to, go ahead.
No, I was, I was just thinking, and Adam, if you want to add to this, you can. I was just remembering back a conversation that Melinda had with us about some of the continuous evolutions of electrical, electric vehicles and some of the technology and as it relates to charging stations and, you know, the idea of front loading that and what that could mean for us and budgeting as it relates to this. And so Adam, is that something that you're seeing similar with, with bus fleets and things of that nature? You brought up that there's a 12-year lifecycle. So if the idea is that at some point, we're going to replace electric vehicles with electric vehicles, where, where, where does that put us as far as? Just you, I'm just thinking here that as far as the procurement plate piece, I don't want us to to start putting bids in for orders for things now if in two years, the technology is going to change even more. And it kind of puts us playing catch up as far as our, our plan and strategy for, for what the infrastructure is going to look like for this. So.
Yeah, it's tough because it moves fast. So I mean, we, I think we see other agencies holding off for that reason. I think the technology changes so much every two years that you have to jump in at some point or you just never get in the game.
Right.
So I think now's a good time for us to be getting in it. And you know, the buses we're getting today are right on that edge of being able to operate for a full eight-hour shift. And we should be able to do that on a couple of routes. The next buses we're getting are 30% more range, so they'll be able to more easily serve more routes all day, just like a diesel bus would. So it's changing fast enough where I think operationally we'll be in good shape. Now, you mentioned kind of the front loading, charging, but the whole charging infrastructure setup and what we need. I think there's a lot of uncertainty with that that we hope to flesh out in the transition plan.
Okay.
Right now, our approach is one charger per one bus. We're charging it overnight. There's a very low average rate at that time, specific to transit vehicles. But do we really need 100 chargers for 100 buses? Probably not. You know, there's, there's some different fast charging technologies that if we do build out a different space, maybe we're running five buses to a single charger. Each one only takes an hour or two. That, it's hard to know where we'll be in three or four years, but I'm sure it'll be a lot different.
Yeah, I just have a quick one. Just, and it's more just a comment. I just want to thank you and your staff for your outstanding work and, you know, coming to weeds for grants and all kinds of funding from the federal government to go ahead and make this possible for us to go ahead and change over our, our transit and our vehicle services to alternative energy and, you know, electric vehicles. So I, I, every time I look up, you guys are finding a new and new and improved grant to go ahead and make that possible. So I just wanted to thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
Just to, I guess I make a couple of comments. I, I mentioned earlier, I mean, I, you know, I, I would be interested in one of these, you know, you were talking about the downtown stops. I mean, I, you know, I do think that's something I'd be interested in and looking more, to thinking more about. And then I guess as it, you know, relates to charging and, and I know we're working on some consultants for that and I'm not sure, I need to see a contract for the consultant, but I am interested in, you know, some ideas about where we put charging stations and how we maximize those. I know I've seen some discussion about, you know, putting charging, you know, even if it's for a city vehicle, you know, putting the charging station, for example, in the parking garage and at night, you might be charging your vehicles. But then during the day, when your vehicles are out, someone might be coming into work and, and they can use that charging station, you know, during the day as opposed to, you know, putting them all out in some city property somewhere. You know, same with downtown, you know, spreading those out and then having people be able to use that. So we have, we're doubling up on the infrastructure, not only for city vehicles, but have that used for private vehicles. You know, people commuting into town, they're looking to charge. Well, maybe we've, you know, we're using a parking garage to charge our city vehicles, but then they can use it during the day, that sort of thing, making sure we're maximizing the charging stations. That's something I'm interested in. And I guess again, I was just, I happened to be out in Portland and Bend, Oregon. And, you know, I saw a lot, and this goes to the bike lanes and the pedestrian lanes. You know, they did a lot of combinations where people were going from, you know, a protected lane to an unprotected lane, possibly when you went to a slower route, then maybe they go off on a, on a bike path, you know, through a certain area and then they get back on the street. I mean, it's very clear where the protected lanes, you know, would take them from one bike path to another bike path, for example, or take them, you know, so, I mean, I, I am interested in continuing to think through, you know, not necessarily, you know, long streets that are just a protected lane, but how we can, you know, really enhance all those modes of transportation. And, you know, I do think some protected bike lanes I would be more interested in than maybe what we did on 21st Street with the protected street. I mean, and I, you know, some of those examples you used, I think in certain areas could be, could be useful, either by reducing parking or reducing the turn lane or whatever. Clearly, you know, we've seen, I mean, I've seen that in some other places around the country that seem to work real well. So I'd be definitely interested in that. And I guess, I hope through T 2050, we get some feedback on what people think about that. I mean, I know 21st Street hasn't got the best reception, but I think there's other ways to do that, like you point out here, that you have some protected bike lanes. Maybe not for long, long periods, but in places where we need protected bike lanes so people feel safe. So I'm excited to, to look and think more about that. Otherwise, great report. I'm, you know, excited to see where we're going.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, this might be for the view, and I agree with you about some places where protected bike lanes might be, and there was a former commissioner and I did agree on one thing, and that was that Massachusetts from, say, 23rd to 19th or 15th is sort of overbuilt and could be used as a beginning spot to try a protected bike lane, especially since it's connected there to 21st Street. So as we're, as we're kind of cogitating on some of these ideas you showed us and as you're working through them with your advisory committees, how do we make sure that, you know, as new projects are coming along, 23rd Street, 19th Street, whatever, that we're giving these ideas a chance? And that we're, we're considering them for protected bike lanes or use of these spaces as you're kind of giving us, giving us examples?
Yeah, so I think in existing road projects, so what you've normally seen from multimodal transportation commission, their annual list of prioritized bike and ped projects, those are the standalone projects. What you're talking about is the projects that the city has already committed to doing the project, most often in the interest of the roadway condition, sometimes capacity, sometimes there's other considerations at play. And that's where the bikeway plan really has a level of comfort analysis. That's a separate piece of this as we talk about comfort of bikeway because you talk about the difference between like protected bikeways, which are more appropriate on a high speed or high volume street as opposed to a neighborhood greenway or a bicycle boulevard, which is more appropriate on neighborhood streets. And so as we think about the network across the community and you think about the example, Commissioner Finkel that you talked about where you see these pieces connecting, that's exactly what we're going to need to do in the community. And the plan calls for that to happen in regard to the level of comfort of the bikeway on the street. And that's really predicated based on the speed of traffic and the volume of traffic. And then there are a bevy of options that you can choose from with, when you understand the operating conditions of the street. So when we had the conversation around the 23rd Street corridor study, we were looking at speeds and volumes on that section of 23rd Street, and there are improvements made to narrow the lanes and to do some access management that helps improve safety for turning movements and access management. But we also, when we started to talk about bikeways, we would have never talked about a bicycle boulevard on that street or on-street bicycle infrastructure. The appropriate bikeway types that we began the conversation about in that, as part of that project, were either a side path, a shared use path that was adjacent to the roadway or a protected cycle track. And so those were kind of vetted in that process and, and what came out of that is shared use path on both sides. Those are similar conversations that happened with Waukerusa with 19th Street. I think we saw those same conversations as part of Castle. And the result has varied a little bit each time. Castle ended up with on-street bike lanes and a shared use path and a sidewalk. Waukerusa and 23rd Street, you know, we got shared use path as, as the kind of the designs that moved forward in those. And that was a result of the process of that conversation that first happened, you know, as part of the consideration in the, the big Lawrence Bikes Plan, but then also as the multimodal transportation commission comes to you and makes recommendations about the design characteristics and the appropriate infrastructure on that street. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Yes, thank you both. This is incredible. Gives us a lot to think about. And thank you again for all your work. Catching all that grant money, way to go. That brings us to our next item of our work session, which is to receive the 2021 annual comprehensive final financial report and audit findings from RSM.
Yes, good evening. Jeremy Willoughby, Finance Director for the City of Lawrence. With me, excuse me, with me tonight is Kristen Hughes with RSM, our audit firm, as well as Rebecca, who is our Engagement Manager. And we also have some of our staff here. Jennifer Worth, our Senior Accountant, and Susan Dash are, is an accountant with our team as well. I'm gonna share my screen here. Just have a couple of slides I want to go through, then I'll turn it over to RSM to go through the audit, and then I'll have just a few more slides to hopefully provide some context to the financial condition of the city, which I know everybody's primary focuses on. So our presentation tonight will focus on three areas. First, we're presenting the city's annual comprehensive financial report. That's on our website. It was also attached to the presentation tonight. We'll have a discussion time with the auditors and then we'll discuss highlights from the report. The first thing I'd like to do is just talk about the report. Like most financial documents, it is very large and voluminous and can be somewhat overwhelming, I think, especially to people who aren't familiar with the document. So what we wanted to do is try to, you know, break it down into chunks to hopefully help the readers of the document understand just what exactly they're looking at. The first section of the document is the introductory section. It covers the transmittal letter that you see here, being on page Roman numeral I, as well as a list of principal officers, a organizational chart for the city as a whole. And then finally, the award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the certificate in excellence in financial reporting. And so the transmittal letter, you know, I think provides a lot of context of the community, some statistics about the community. So it's, in my opinion, it's very helpful, especially for people that may be looking to invest in potential bonds that we're offering to get an appreciation of our community. And, and so hopefully you'll find that helpful as well. The second section is the financial section, what we're going to spend the bulk of tonight talking about, which begins with the auditor's opinion, which they'll go over with you here in just a few minutes. That's followed up by what's called management's discussion and, and analysis. And that starts on page four, goes to page 15. It's an 11-page summary of the entire document, if you will. So if you want to get a real appreciation for just a broad overview of the city's entire financial position, I would point you to that document, the management discussion and analysis, to hopefully give you a nice broad overview and then point you to various sections within the document where you can find more information about anything that is of particular interest. Next are the government-wide financial statements. We have the statement of net position and the statement of activities. We also have the notes to the basic financial statements. And this is really where the meat, if you will, of the financial report resides. So this is where we cover all of our policies and procedures. We explain things within the financial statements and provide context to long-term debt, capital, assets, pension, other post-employment benefits, OPEB, and other things of that nature. Then there's the required supplementary information and then a listing of budgetary funds for the non-major fund section, which would be all the special revenue funds, such as the bond fund, such as the capital sales tax fund, the housing trust fund, the transit, transportation fund, et cetera, are all found back there. And then finally, the statistical section, we believe a lot of readers will be interested in as it provides a 10-year look at various segments of data, whether it's comparing property taxes over the last 10 years, whether it's comparing census data, you know, population statistics, things of that nature, as well as various components of the financial statements themselves are broken down in different ways in that statistical section. So for those who really like to dig into numbers and compare year to year, that statistical section is a plethora of information for you. So focusing just on the governmental funds, the balance sheet to the governmental funds can be found on page 19. A statement of revenue, expenditure and any changes to fund balance can be found on page 21. And then a general fund budget to actual comparison is on page 23. On the major business-type funds, the statement of net position is on page 24. The statement of revenue, expenses and changes in net position is page 26, and then a statement of cash flow, which is very helpful to track actual activity within the fund, is on page 27. And with that, I will turn it over to Kristen and Rebecca.
Thank you, Jeremy. Just confirm, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. So Jeremy, as he just went through, I won't spend really too much time on this city's acopher. I know he's prepared. He did a nice job walking through really kind of the content and where to find it. And then he's going to go through a few slides in a bit that really summarizes some financial information as well. So I'm going to focus a bit more on, on the audit results side themselves. So a couple of the other deliverables, I believe you were providing copies with is, is that compliance report and the auditor communications packet. So I'll be really just summarizing the content of, of those items. So first of all, just what, to echo what Jeremy did say in the audited financial statements, you will see an unmodified audit opinion issued by us. That's the formal AICPA term for what's also more commonly known as a clean audit opinion, meaning the financials are presented in accordance with US GAAP as, as required. The compliance report is the smaller bound document that goes through some of the results of the audit. So it's going to house, first of all, information specific to the city's federal grant funds and the compliance audit we performed, but also some of the results of the financial statement audit. So going through that, I will note certainly nice to report that in the financial, both the financial statement audit and in the compliance audit, which again is going to be specific to our testing of the, the city's expenditures of federal grants. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies nor material instances of non- nor material instances of non-compliance identified. You know, it is important to provide a reminder that the purpose of a financial statement audit is to not give an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls, nor does the auditor does not. However, internal controls are certainly considered when we're designing our audit procedures, especially those that are considered key as it relates to financial reporting. So we do take a look at those key control areas. And if we were to become aware of any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, again, the standards would require us to report that to you, but none were noted. But again, just reminding that obviously there's the potential that deficiencies could be out there that exist that may not have come up with the course of our testing. But again, none that came up. In the compliance audit, I know you all actually were talking about grant expenditures received just on the previous topic. So the compliance report provides a summary by grant of the city's expenditures of federal grants. The total amount of federal grant expenditures in 2021 was 9.7 million. We, as part of the compliance audit, we select certain major programs. The how we select is all defined by the AICPA, but it is done on a risk-based approach. At a high level, that's probably more commonly going to be the grants that have the highest dollar volume, driven by maybe when was the last time they were audited. And then also actually cares, cares, the granting agencies always have the option of tagging something as high-risk themselves. And honestly, over the last three years, what we've seen is granting agencies have also identified grants that are receiving specifically high dollars of cares flowing through them as high-risk. So just so you're aware, the three major programs that we audited this year was, first of all, the amount that the city reported as ARPA expenditures in 2021. We also audited the FTA cluster, which is going to be primarily the federal transit spending. And then lastly, the Emergency Solutions Grant. So just for perspective, those three programs represented about 8.1 million of that 9.7 I mentioned. So we, in essence, audited about 85% of the city's grant expenditures on a sample basis through those three programs. But again, specific to our testing of the grants as well, there were no deficiencies identified nor any instances of non-compliance identified in that testing. The other packet you've been provided with are what's called Required Audit Communications. So auditing standards do require us to communicate on certain topics at the conclusion of each audit to those charged with governance. So in this document, you'll see, first of all, really just reminders certainly of the standards we follow as we're executing our audits, but also the responsibilities that management does have in the financial reporting process, as well as the audit process, which are all laid out in the arrangement letter at the start of the whole process. In here, you'll see summarized significant accounting estimates. Those are really called out just to remind you that there are certain areas of the financials that are not necessarily transactions. There are components of subjectivity. Jeremy touched upon a few of those. The city's participation in pension and OPEB plans, for example. That's where an actuary is coming through and using their professional opinion to estimate what are future liabilities for you there. But obviously, there's assumptions involved in those estimates. So we do take a look at those as part of the audit and make sure they, the estimates appear reasonable, both of industry standards as well as policies that you have internally implemented on those topics. The auditor communications would also summarize if there were any audit adjustments identified during the course of the audit, and there weren't on this year. So, you know, that is, that does speak to the effort put in by the Finance Department as preparing the trial ballots that we were provided with to start our audit. You know, again, it's not uncommon for adjustments to come up through, but it's nice to be able to say certainly there were none or a minimum. But I do like to point out that especially when talking of a city your size and the high volume of transactions you have, it does happen. But, but no, we really didn't identify any significant adjustments this year. So what that really means is the final audited financials you're reviewing are consistent with that trial ballots that we started with in performing our testing. You will see there are what's referred to as a summary of uncorrected misstatements here. All that simply means is immaterial items that did come up in the course of the audit. So we may have found, this is a summary of items where an adjustment was recommended, but simply due to the immateriality of these amounts to the financials, management chose to summarize them in this packet rather than running those changes through. That can take some effort. You've seen how large the report is. So an additional adjustment here or there does have quite the domino effect. So again, the emphasis here is that these were immaterial. We agreed with that conclusion. The nature of most of them, to be honest, are timing issues. So perhaps an accrual of an expense that related to fiscal year 21, for example, that wasn't captured, but instead it's running through the 2022 financials. So that's often the nature of these is simply a timing issue from a GAAP perspective of when those expenditures get recognized. In the document, you'll see there was one just controlled efficiency issue. So as a reminder, under the standards, there are three levels of deficiencies. As I mentioned, there's material weakness, really, significant deficiency and controlled deficiency is that lowest level. The controlled deficiency is the item we've discussed in the past. And I know the city is currently in the process of implementing a new GL, but under the previous, or I guess, current general ledger system that's being worked out right now, there were, there was the ability to make modifications within that as it related to journal entries, et cetera. And that can pose a risk to accurate financial reporting, depending on the types of controls that are in place to monitor those. So we did repeat that as a controlled deficiency this year. And obviously, with the upcoming changes in general ledgers, you know, hopefully I'm sure the goal on Jeremy's team is that that last deficiency, at least out of this audit, will get resolved with that change. And lastly, included in this document, you're provided with a copy of the Management Representation Letter, which is just a key summary from really the finance team and those involved in financial reporting, that both the financials are accurate to the best of their knowledge as well as all of the information we were provided with when performing our test work. Jeremy, that's probably everything I was going to go through. So I'm happy to pause if there are questions for me or let you continue with your presentation and we can do questions together at the end, whichever is easier for you.
Sorry, I lost my menu bar there. Mayor, I'll defer to you. Would you like to field questions on the audit now? Or would you like to go through the presentation?
Particular questions they want to go through right now? Doesn't look like it. Go ahead, Jeremy. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's for that delay. Thank you, Kristen. I do want to, you know, extend the Finance Department's appreciation for you and your staff. And I think we, you know, had a good working relationship to get through all of the various federal programs. Of course, they were considerably larger in terms of dollar and context with the CARES Act this year. So the single audit took a little bit longer than it has in the past. But we certainly appreciate all the help and support from RSM. And again, I want to reiterate, you know, it's a total team effort. The Finance Department obviously has a day-to-day relationship with the auditors, but as we called on different departments to help us explain transactions throughout the year, each and every department stepped up and provided the documentation in a timely manner. And so we on the finance staff are very appreciative of the other teams within the city and the cooperation that they exhibited as we worked through this financial audit. So I know we're, you know, we're the ones here presenting tonight, but it really is a citywide effort to ensure the financial accuracy of our financial statements. So with that, I'll move into, you know, just a little bit of what does this all mean? The first primary financial component would be the net position for the city. And so this chart here shows net position for the last five years. And the governmental funds are the blue line. And the business-type activities or the enterprise funds are the orange or red line, depending on color of your screen. As you'll see, governmental activities, net unrestricted net position has been negative for the last two years. Part of this is primarily due to the way that governments are required to report net pension obligation, other post-employment benefit obligations in their entirety on the balance sheet, when obviously we'll be expecting that annual revenues will continue to support annual expenditures to support those costs. But the way that we're required to show it on the government-wide financial statement is the entire amount that is currently owed. But of course, we only have the assets that we have available. And so a negative net unrestricted net position is not uncommon in governments of our size for that reason. We also, of course, issue a lot of temporary debt to begin the financing of projects that then later turns into, is converted into long-term debt. And that, of course, also has some bearing on the availability of assets to cover your liabilities in the current period versus future periods. And I won't, you know, read all of this, but that's essentially what I just described here. Increases in pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities are the reason why we have negative net position in the governmental funds as well as bonds payable, depreciation, things of that nature that are recorded at the balance sheet government-wide level. The next metric we like to look at is fund balance. And so these are just the governmental funds again, all funds combined for the last five years. You see, we had a pretty significant drop from 19 to 20 that can be expected in that pandemic, you know, time that we went through. What we really saw in 2021, though, was a rebounding, if you will, of the fund balance for the governmental funds. Some of this was due to the issuance of debt. Some of it was due just to the rebounding of our local economy. And so one thing I think is important for, you know, government to keep in mind for all businesses for that matter, to keep in mind is your ability to pay your current liabilities. And so current liabilities from a financial context are anything that is due within a year. You know, so it'd be any accrued payroll, any accounts payable, any liabilities that are due and payable in one year. And so we look at our total cash for the city and compare that to our current liabilities. And our cash is currently higher than our liabilities by about $110 million, which means that we can easily pay our current obligations and are not in a position where we need to borrow money, you know, like a tax anticipation note or something of that nature to meet obligations. So that's a sign of good fiscal health for our city. Another sort of look at that, if you will, just for the last five years, is where our liabilities have been. You'll see the increase in liabilities from 19 to 20 again was the temporary notes that were borrowed. The temporary note in '21 was slightly less than the temporary note in 2020. But that is predominantly the fire department. I'm sorry, not the fire department, the police facility. But we also have quite a few road projects and park projects that have been tied into that as well. So going back and looking at the CIPs over the various years may help provide some context for how much we've borrowed on a temporary basis. So then looking just at revenues and expenditures to try to, you know, get another slice of this pie, if you will, for all of the governmental funds. We have our revenue projection or our revenues for the last five years and our expenditures for the last five years. Those peaks and valleys have a lot to do with when debt is issued as well. But as I mentioned, you see a rebounding in our revenue in 2021, which is another sign of good fiscal strength coming out of the pandemic. So I'll take just a second on this slide here. This is the property tax slide. There's essentially three levers to the property tax. The assessed valuation, that's established by the county. The mill levy that's established by the city commission. And then the property taxes, which is essentially the math, taking the assessed valuation, multiplying it by the mill levy to get the property tax. And so as you can see, over the last five years, we've seen pretty steady growth in our assessed valuation. We've also seen that same level of growth in our property tax while holding that mill levy essentially flat. One final note on the property tax. Once you all establish a property tax for a given budget year, there may be changes to the assessed valuation. And so then state law allows the county clerk to adjust that levy slightly to achieve the revenue that you all approved in your budget based on the assessed valuation. So the assessed valuation figures that you see here will be different than the figures that you see in the budget because the budget is a estimate of assessed valuation. And this is the actual assessed valuation after it's gone through the appeal process. And so focusing just on the general fund now, if you look at pages 19 and 21 of our report, this is where this information came from. Again, looking at cash to expenditures, you know, we're sitting on about 25% or three months' worth of cash. And then when you look at revenues to expenses, we had just a little bit of a net loss. And part of this was helping the, the general fund was helping to shore up some of those other special revenue funds that were especially hit during the pandemic, such as the gas tax fund and the special gasoline tax and the special alcohol fund. I do think it's worth noting that the general fund did have a $3 million support, if you will, from the federal ARPA, the American Recovery Plan Fund. So had we not had that, that the net loss would have been considerably higher. So those ARPA funds were definitely there to support the fiscal year and to help continue to rebound our account, our local funding in the general fund. So looking at where fund balance has been the last five years, comparing that with cash and revenue, that's what this slide is doing. You can see our fund balance was staying essentially flat, little bit of growth over the last several years. But then, I'm sorry, not fund balance revenue. What we really saw was revenue rebound in 2021, which you'll see on the next slide as we compare taxes over the last five years and all the various revenue categories. Our cash position has actually declined in the general fund over the last several years, predominantly from what we discussed with the pandemic and using some of those reserves that the general fund has been holding to help shore up some of those other funds throughout the pandemic. So this is looking at revenue by the different categories. Taxes, of course, are the big one, our biggest category of revenue for the general fund. This would cover property taxes, sales and use taxes, and franchise fees. We have licenses and permit as well. These are predominantly the business licenses through the Plan Development Services. Intergovernmental revenue would be anything that's state shared revenue, such as the liquor tax or any grants that the general fund may have received. And then charges for services, this is predominantly going to be the Parks Department. You'll see, as we consolidated last year, the general fund and the Recreation Fund, that's the reason for the growth in charges for services. But this is also where Douglas County's portion of EMS is collected. So what we build accounting, what they pay for the countywide EMS services are also in this account. Fines and forfeitures would be any, is predominantly the fines that are assessed by the municipal court. Municipal, I'm sorry, miscellaneous includes the interest payments as well as other miscellaneous type revenues, such as rents, leases, things of that nature. And then the transfer into the general fund is really coming from three sources, the water fund, the solid waste fund, and the stormwater fund as a payment in lieu of a franchise fee. This slide here is comparing the types of expenditures. So general governmental expenditures. You'll see there is a decline from 20 to 21. As some of you may recall, this was the city establishing the Administrative Services Fund. And so expenditures for the city commission, the city manager's office, the city clerk's office, the city attorney's office, and the communications office were moved out of the general fund to the Administrative Services Fund so that all the funds within the cities to the administrative services fund, so that all the funds within the city's network could help pay for those costs rather than just the tax heavy general fund. So the difference between 2020 and 2021 is really the general fund's allocation, if you will, of those general governmental expenses. So you can see the public safety, the police department, the fire and medical department. Public works is the MSO, it's essentially our street department. Health and social services is predominantly the general fund support for the city and county shared health department. Parks and Recreation, you can see that growth from 20 to 21 was that consolidation between the general fund, the recreation fund and the golf course fund. Then before 2021, we're all three separate funds and in 2021, we're all consolidated. And then capital, of course, is anything that meets our definition of capital, which is expenditures over $20,000 that are for more than one year. On the infrastructure side, it's over $50,000. And then transfer out, as you can see, a, a pretty big increase between 20 and 21 was the general fund helping those smaller funds to maintain their service level that the community expected throughout the pandemic. Moving on to the water and sewer fund, our largest enterprise fund can be found on page 24 and 26 of our report. You can see cashed expense, we've got roughly five months of cash to cover expenditures. And there was about a, almost a 4% revenue over expenditures for 2021, which was a, a pretty strong rebound from prior years. We've got a similar slide to the general fund for the water and sewer fund. You can see revenues actually declined a little bit from 20 to 21. Or I'm sorry, from 18 to 19, this was, there was, there were revenue bonds issued in 18. There weren't any revenue bonds issued in 19. That's the primary reason for that revenue dip. And then we issued debt in 21, more revenue bonds. So that's the primary increase in the unrestricted net position. Just a few slides left, an overview of the city's debt portfolio. Temporary notes are anything that's essentially a year or two years. So short term borrowing, the long term, short, the long term borrowing are the general obligation debt on the governmental side. And the, the revenue bonds would be long term debt that's funded by water and wastewater user fees. And so this is a picture of what our current outstanding debt is from now until 2051, meaning if we did not issue any more debt, this is how long it would take for us to pay off our outstanding debt that we currently have on the books. This is the general obligation and this is the revenue. And I believe those are all the slides that I have prepared. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. That's great. Any questions?
Well, go ahead.
I just have one, one question to start with. So the, our cash, our general fund reserve monies, are we getting to a point to where those are strong enough that we could potentially impact our bond rating to a positive, in a positive way?
Jeremy Wilmouth, Finance Director. The sure answer is no. The, the items that are keeping us from hitting that next benchmark in, in bond rating are really outside of our control. As you read the, the Moody's credit rating reports, they're constantly talking about our economy and they're meaning the Midwest. And it, it's the, the current economic condition that we're in, I think we would have to markedly increase the amount of cash that we have in reserves before that would impact Moody's enough to say, you know, we're the, the highest rated debt, if you will. The difference between the highest rated debt and where we currently sit, you know, we may shave 25 basis points off, off a, a debt borrowing, but we would have to, you know, greatly increase the amount of cash reserves that we have on hand to assure the bondholders in Moody's eyes, that is, that we have, that we have the ability and the wherewithal to cover our current debt. Our, our bigger concern, in my opinion, is that if our cash reserves start to, to shrink, we could see Moody's downgrade our debt. You know, and, and I mean, to be fair, the, the city of Lawrence is in a very, very strong debt class. You know, we're just one step below the best one they offer. But we could potentially see them downgrade us a step if they believe that our financial outlook is diminishing. And, and really what they've said in that is almost what we saw with the pandemic, right? A stark decrease in tax collections. Of course, that was pandemic led. There was really nothing in our control to, to mitigate that. So Moody's does not, you know, really use that to, to criticize debt issuers. But if we were to see a, a sharp decline in revenues without, you know, some sort of catastrophic explanation, that can be a reason that Moody's could potentially downgrade our debt. Cash reserves, I think, are probably the bit, the bigger concern that if, if we, if we start to, to stray away from our commitment to the 90 days of, of cash on hand, we could potentially see Moody's see that as a negative sign of our fiscal outlook.
Thank you.
Yes, it's probably a question for Christian. I know last, I guess it's the third year RSM has done the, the audits. And we've, we've always had a lot more questions for you because you've had a lot more things to say in, in that maybe more of a negative light. But, you know, obviously I've looked through this and it's a, it's a, you know, in layman's terms, a much better audit than we've had in the past. What, I guess, can you, can you give all, a, any qualitative changes you've seen or, or what, what's the explanation for that? Besides the great work of Jeremy and Jennifer and others, but can you put any color, I guess, on that?
Sure. And I definitely like, would like to let Jeremy chime in as well. And I only say that because, you know, part of our audit is to follow up on what, what has management potentially changed each year to rectify prior, prior year deficiencies. So, you know, really, I, I believe Jeremy can correct me if my memory is failing me. But last year, you know, I think the last remaining material weakness was really kind of overall a financial reporting meeting. We were identifying several material audit adjustments when we came in to perform our testing. So when I talked about audit adjustments earlier were a key part of that. And that what that meant was we received the trial balance and in the course of our testing would find either errors or, or again, adjustments needed to accurately report something. And then auditing standards require us, first of all, to ask the why, why, why are these adjustments not getting caught? Quantify them, think about them qualitatively. And really, it was kind of a combination of all those, but the quantitative impact of those dollar amounts. You know, we, we really, the way it would have been written up in the past was if these had not been identified, then you start to go down a path of your financials maybe have material errors in them. So really, when, when I mentioned earlier, I can't, I'll let Jeremy answer maybe what they did differently on their side. But again, the, the one that really rectified that last material weakness that we had last year was that there were no adjustments of a material nature identified in the course of our, our testing that were things I'll just say not getting completely identified and resolved by the finance department before any of the other departments collectively, before we came in and started our testing. Jeremy, you're welcome to add anything to that if you'd like on, on your team's end.
Sure. You know, one of the things we really focused on this year was improving our communication with the departments and making sure that, you know, we were following up on anything that we thought may not have been recorded properly right then and there, rather than traditionally waiting toward the end of the year when, you know, things get a little bit more hectic. And so I really commend Jennifer and Susan and their ability to communicate with, you know, non-financial people in our organization to make sure that things are being recorded accurately and timely. And I really think that, that was probably a big change was just our monthly check process. You know, one, having, having the financials in a place where we could do that monthly check. We've sort of been in a triage mode for the last several years. And so starting to, you know, turn that corner and start to spend more time analytically looking at the data rather than just trying to, you know, rush at the last minute to get it all put together. I think, you know, there to be commended for that. They've done a, a really good job of month, month end closing procedures that we've put into place.
Well, then I'd just like to thank Jennifer and Susan. Thanks, thanks a lot for your, your work on that.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I've got a couple of comments. First of all, I'm just really ecstatic about this report. This has been a long time in coming, in coming. And Jeremy and his staff has, have just done a, a great job at turning this around. I can remember when some of this started out back in maybe 2017 or so was when we discovered that our financial tracking system wasn't even tracking the rents that we owed. We were like quarter million dollars short on rents that hadn't been paid for several years. And that was discovered and uncovered by, I believe, Brian Kidney at the time. And it started to really bring to light the difficult, difficult aspect of, of our financial system and how archaic it was at the time. And, and as a result of some of those early discoveries, it really opened up our eyes as to the need to overhaul our entire financial system and how we do our tracking. And what we also found, there was so many silo situations where monies would be collected differently by different departments. And now with Jeremy had, when Jeremy has come in here and his staff, they have just done a great job of slowly turning this around and getting, getting on top of our financial situation. And the influx of funding that we've recently approved in the past couple of years to bring into a whole new financial software system is going to make a really big difference as to, to how we can become more efficient and see more efficiencies just within the system as, as well as all of our organizations. So I am just really ecstatic about this report. Jeremy, you guys have done a great job and I know it's been very difficult with everything from just staff turnover and, and the whole prospect of what it took to do this. And so I thank you very much for your work. It's been very rewarding. Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's make sure there's no public comment. Not seeing anything here in there. Is there any public comment online? Uh, no, mere. Okay, one last time for any comments.
Uh, yeah, I would just like to echo Vice Mayor Larson's comments. I've seen, haven't necessarily been up here on the dais, but from the outside and I, I've seen the last couple of years, the work that's been done. And I just want to commend Jeremy and the staff to get us to this place.
And yeah, thank you, RSM, for helping us through those years and this year. I appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Um, I want to check on everybody. Does anyone need a break now? Are we going to want to push through?
I would mind a little break.
Little break. Can we come back at 8:13? Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone. Uh, let's return to our third. You still have one more thing to wait for. Sorry about that. Don't get too excited. Um, receive information and provide feedback on the sidewalk improvement program.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager with MSO. I'm going to be presenting tonight with other team members on this topic, including Evan Correnta, our. ADA Compliance Administrator and Darren Hague, Asset Innovation Manager for MSO. The the purpose of the work session tonight is to follow up from follow up on Commissioner inquiries. And discussion from our April fifth meeting on the sidewalk improvement program. Specifically, we've got four items to address and provide updates on. And then after our presentation, of course, we'll be happy to take any questions. So with that, I'm just going to dive right into those four discussion points, the first of which is going to be an update on how other municipalities handle sidewalk repair and maintenance. And for that, I'll pass it on to Evan Correnta to provide that information.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Evan Corrent and I'm the ADA Compliance Administrator for the city. And like Jake mentioned at the previous sidewalk improvement program discussion, one of the directives. Was to explore what other cities in Kansas were doing regarding sidewalk maintenance and repair. And as a result, over the last several months, I've reached out to staff in different communities. To discuss sidewalk ordinances and any maintenance repair programs that they may have in place to help kind of provide some offset to some of those costs. So attached on the agenda is the list of information that we were able to put together. As you can see, most sidewalk ordinances are similar in the language they provide. That that places maintenance and repair responsibility onto adjacent property owners. And additionally, we've included some, some, some different cost share programs that some of the communities have come up with as well. And you'll see kind of a wide range in there. You have. You know, one community that doesn't actually provide any kind of financial assistance and it's kind of all up to the. Adjacent property owners to handle all repairs and maintenance costs. And then on the other far end, you have. One city in Overland Park that that covers all the costs and the rest kind of falls somewhere in the middle. Whether that be through a fifty fifty cost share type program or a cost cap program where a. Resident may only have to pay up to a certain dollar amount and then anything over that is the city's responsibility. So kind of a variety of ways that. That we found that communities have. Kind of looked to address some of these cost issues. But almost all have the same similar language. And and a lot of that probably stems from the Kansas statute on sidewalk. Maintenance and repair language, which is very similar to the ordinances that you see. Which is the duty of the owner of the abiding property to keep sidewalk in repair. So. That's kind of what we had found out as far as some of the different cost. Items and some of the other cities within Kansas. Go ahead, Jake.
Great, thanks, Darren. Sorry, Evan. Moving on to our second item to discuss is the update on the financial assistance application. Commissioner Sellers let us know that the guiding income tables on on those applications needed an update. We were also made aware we had an error on the second table, I believe. So we've made that correction. And we worked with the Housing Initiatives Division to to get the correct and updated table on that application and get it live and online again. And as a result of that update, the income thresholds. To qualify for assistance have actually increased, making it easier for families to qualify for assistance. And those two tables are on a single page there in the agenda, attached to the agenda for comparison. And then that brings us to our third item, community engagement. So we've broken that into really two pieces, educate and engage. On educate, we're working on standing up a. A central webpage really for all pedestrian projects to help everybody better understand the scope and needs of all those projects. So once this page is up and running, you know, it'll be the the central place to go to find out about the sidewalk improvement program, sidewalk gaps, sidewalk replacements. ADA sidewalk ramps and eventually brick sidewalks. The second piece again was to engage and we're going to do that via a Lawrence Liston survey, the draft of which is is also attached to the agenda item. In summary, that survey is really hoping to. For the city to better understand the community's desires and expectations for sidewalk repair. And as part of the background on that survey, we briefly discussed the sidewalk improvement program as it stands and how it works right now. We discussed the importance of sidewalk repair. Through its increasing accessibility with the ADA Transition Plan, also with the Lawrence Pedestrian Plan. And then we also got a brief. Brief thing on the scope of sidewalk repairs in Lawrence and what's needed. So. And then, of course, we've also got the survey questions themselves, which are there for your consideration and feedback. And I think that really wraps up the item on community engagement, which is going to bring us to our fourth and final item of discussion. Which is a pedestrian project cost. And I will pass it on to Darren Hague now to discuss those costs.
Thank you, Jake. Darren Hague, Asset and Innovation Manager with MSO. If you're looking at the. Graph that's associated with the agenda item, you know, through the analysis of right of way LIDAR and four years now with the sidewalk sidewalk inspection program. It's allowed us to get a better picture of the condition of our sidewalks. This graph kind of shows you our estimates for repairs at. Twelve point four million. And replacements at forty six point five million. And to explain replacements, replacements are anywhere where we have a, an entire block. Of sidewalk where more than twenty percent of it is damaged and that's been termed or put in the replacement box. We also have our ramps at six point four million and brick is broken out from this at nine point one million because brick. Has a significant cost difference than your traditional sidewalk. And last but not least, we have identified gaps through the work of Jessica's team. In Planning Development Services, you kind of figure out where a lot of the gaps are in our sidewalk network and that comes out at fifty four point four million dollars. And you can see at the bottom, the twenty year range for. A program at twenty years, that would be the annual range of cost. Or a fifteen year program and that would be kind of your general range of cost. And that's kind of sums up this slide. And Jake, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I was just going to note that the the two twenty and fifteen year ranges, I think we got from Evan, because I think that is the the anticipated. Timeline horizon of his ADA Transition Plan. So that's why we provided that information. But thanks, Darren, for going through that slide. That really concludes, I think, all the information staff had prepared tonight. So I'd be happy to stand by for questions you got now. Thanks.
Um, on that last slide, the replacement and the repair, are those the. You know, the sidewalk replacement program, I mean, those would be the two that. Citizens would be. Possibly be responsible for. I mean, some of those could be city sidewalks, but do we have a breakdown, I guess, of what. On residential properties? Or do we know that?
This is Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. No, we don't have that information yet. But yes, you are correct. Those are the two kind of pieces of the pie there that could have some property owner responsibility associated to them. But. We really don't know what those are until we go through and complete inspections.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just, I was just curious, what's our. I'm just looking at the ADA Transition Plan and then the pedestrian plan. What's our current level of staff allocated? Towards this? Because, uh, you know, that's a pretty good sized percentage of gaps in their repair there. Or replacement.
Uh, Evan Correnta, ADA Compliance Administrator. So if I understand your question, how many staff do we have? To with the inspection process or as part of the ADA Transition Plan Team?
Uh, both, actually. If you can answer both, that'd be great.
Okay, so the ADA Transition Plan Team for Public Right of Way makes up, there's probably about. Eight to ten internal staff members on that, on that team, including, you know, myself that kind of leads that. That effort. And then we have. You know, staff from a variety of departments, whether it be planning, inspection staff, engineering staff. Parks and Rec. So we kind of have a variety of people that that know equity and inclusion, you know, that make up that team. So that that would be kind of the internal team. But as far as the inspection staff, Jake, we probably know more of that.
Sure, Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. Commissioner Littlejohn, were you asking more like how much, how many staff members we have implementing these types of projects?
Yeah, yeah, because just to get a timeline of and just an idea of like, you know, rate of progress.
Well, I don't know that that's a metric we've really analyzed. I would say there's probably three or four members of our CMed group within MSO who work on pedestrian projects in one fashion or another. I know we've discussed trying to get our repair project, I think, done on the next eight years. I believe that is the the time horizon. I could be mistaken, but it's somewhere in that neighborhood. And really, it's a matter of funding and then staff allocation in terms of how quickly we could address the other ones.
Okay.
Jake, could you give me an idea of how much, how many of this, how much sidewalks we have inspected to date? I know we got. You said four hundred and twenty two miles of them. How much has actually been inspected?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. Darren, do you happen to have those numbers pulled up? I don't have them off the top of my head.
I don't have them off the top, top of my head either. I don't have them pulled up, but I think the program was to last ten years on the inspection. And so we're trying to do about ten percent. Every year. So I I would guess that we're in about the forty percent range.
Okay.
Anything else? I'd like to know more about what you consider a gap or what Jessica considers a gap.
Jessica Morton, Transportation Planning Manager. So when we conducted the pedestrian plan, gaps were determined first, the existing gaps before we started the plan. Had been identified as sidewalk gaps on any part of the network that was on a collector or arterial street. And on safe routes to school routes. As part of the pedestrian plan, we also analyzed access to healthy food destinations. Parks and transit and identified additional segments of sidewalk that should be filled to serve those needs to connect to what we call the priority pedestrian network. So the gaps is not every section of sidewalk that needs sidewalk. It's what has been prioritized in the pedestrian plan for infill. And prioritization as part of the non-motorized prioritization process.
We know how many miles of existing sidewalk and trails we have. Do we know what you, how many miles you estimate that fifty four million to be?
Nope, but I can look it up for you. I don't know that on the top of my head.
That's all right. Oh, uh, since you have this broken down, even in the gaps. And the replacement, we had, I think, talked last time about. Perhaps putting together a CIP item, which of course under the circumstances would not have been funded. But which then we could look at perhaps infrastructure grant funding from the federal government. Was there any recall of us suggesting that?
Uh, this is Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I believe we do have a project in the recommended budget to address sidewalk replacements. I. I'm trying to pull that up and see if I can get you the name and number for that.
So my recollection is we budget five hundred thousand a year, something like that for five years. But of course, that doesn't touch this fifty four million. Or the forty six point five. Oh, look, there's somebody. Hey, Melinda, what you got?
Good evening, Melinda Harker, Assistant Director of MSO. I think the project Jake's looking for is the ADA Sidewalk Reconstruction Project. So we did put that in to take care of some of those full replacement blocks. That had been identified in some of the areas already inspected. So that is project. MS dash twenty three dash eight thousand three. So we have eighty thousand for design. This coming year, twenty twenty three, and then seven hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty four. Um, as far as. You know, a program that carries out through all five years, I think we're wanting to get the data a little bit more refined first and also look at the ADA Transition Plan. For right of way that will be finalized the end of next year. So that will give us some more information on, you know, where we go and what do we prioritize so we can better. Put some dollars to that.
So I guess we laid a question. I mean, we have the annual, this kind of goes to Commissioner Littlejohn's question too, the annual cost investment scenarios. What's our, what do we, what are we putting in? What's our, what do we, what are we putting in now under that? You know, if you lump all those together, what do we put in now per year? I know it's not 4.8 million, but I mean, it looked like the sidewalk program, we did 2 million over three years, maybe so that maybe that's 700,000 a year, which includes citizen contributions. And I know we have some money in gap, you know, we have some money in the gap program. We build sidewalks each year and save schools and stuff, but anyone have a guess on the where we sit there when you put those numbers together?
Sure. This is Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I just, I broke out the calculator, tried to add these things together. And I would estimate we're probably about a million dollars a year, plus or minus funding between, you know, we've got about half of the funds from our five year bike ped plan. So that's, you know, 675 divided by two, we try to split that evenly. We've got 500, $600,000 a year in the sidewalk improvement program. We've got a few hundred thousand dollars in our ADA ramps program every year. And I think that's about it. Besides, besides the $750,000 that Melinda mentioned for our replacements that we're kind of trying to stand up.
So the million dollar range.
Now, we actually may be over that. I'm checking my calculations on the fly. But we could definitely report that number back if that's something you're seeing to compare to the numbers we've got on the slide.
Anything else? Oh, Jessica?
Yeah, so about 43 miles of gaps.
Thank you. I have a very absurdly specific question, Jake. When you went through this year, I think one of the neighborhoods you were in was Pinkney, and that seems like a neighborhood that's sort of half brick, half not brick. Since you don't have your brick standards yet, how did you, how did you enforce that in that area without your brick standards?
Sure, Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. Mayor, we're just not enforcing that on those properties yet. So like you said, we identified priority pedestrian routes in that Pinkney neighborhood. So our inspectors, when they do an inspection on a property, they log what the material of the sidewalk is, whether it's concrete or brick. So we're able to filter out those inspections that are brick and really put them aside until we've got that policy figured out and we can address them.
Any other questions? What, what is your timeline right now on, on getting with the group again on the brick standards?
Assistant Director MSO.
Melinda, you're breaking up a little bit.
Yeah, you're kind of coming and going, Melinda. Oh, there you are.
Sorry, my internet is unstable, so I'll hopefully be able to answer this question before I'm kicked out again. Linda Harger, Assistant Director MSO. So we have a position in recruitment and once we fill that position, we're hoping to get back with the group. So we are struggling a little bit with capacity within our group right now. And so we've prioritized the CIP and keep keeping those projects moving and then.
Okay, thank you.
Most of that.
Any other questions right now? Okay, let's see if there's any public comment. Is there any public comment online?
No public comment there.
Okay, great. Let's bring it back. Any particular comments before I launch? So Evan, I just happened to run into the mayor of Derby, Kansas. So you can add that to your list of places that 100% finances all of its sidewalks. I think they're near Wichita, aren't they?
Yep.
Yeah. I, I want to talk a little bit about the survey. And it seems like we could add a little bit of information here. I appreciate that we're calling it. What are you calling, cost partnering? But it doesn't really explain here, what if you read all the instructions that if the city does this work, it goes on your taxes. So I thought it might be a little appropriate. And is it, is it right that they can pay it over three years?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I believe it's five years.
Oh, five years, okay. And then the 612, I think you clarified last time, that's, that's the people that you worked with. That's not, that doesn't encompass all the people who did the work on their own or hired someone out, right?
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you repeat that at the beginning?
Yeah, you're, what you have here is the cost that the property owners have paid, the $612,000. That, those are the people that have worked with you to do the work through the city to do the work. Not necessarily people who did the work on their own or hired someone else, right?
That, that is correct. Yeah, we can't, we don't have any way to track that.
Since, and this may end up being partly for Jessica too, since you've focused on collectors and larger streets, what's the other one? Help me out, collectors and.
Arterials.
Is it likely that many, if not all of those, will end up being part of a complete streets project one time or another? Which would include the sidewalk replacements?
Well, I think that's a question probably for Jake and I both. I think, you know, that's a longer process probably than 10 years. Many of those streets are constructed with longer life cycles or they require minor maintenance, which doesn't necessarily, hasn't meant all of those sidewalk repairs. So that's how I first answered that. But I don't know, Jake, how those have been considered as part of balancing out sidewalk improvements. So maybe you could answer that.
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I think that's a pretty good summary. You know, if we do a complete street project, right, it's a huge reconstruction project and you know, some of those like East 23rd Street, 30, 50 years, you know, is the timeline in a project like that. So I really am not in a good position to, to say when each one would, you know, be ready for that. But you do have a point that, you know, when we do a major reconstruction project like that, the sidewalks and bike facilities would get addressed to the complete streets policy.
I'm excited that we're going to do a Lawrence listens on this. And we do have some correspondence, although I don't know that it got in our packet, kind of suggesting as people always do, that it isn't necessarily a fair sample. Have we considered sending this to the people who have already gone through this program to get their opinion of how it went for them?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I think the idea behind the surveys would be community wide. So those people would be participating in the survey. But I don't think there's any really committed questions that point to that experience. So that could be something we could add.
Any other thoughts about the survey?
Just a couple of thoughts on the survey. Again, thinking back about how we're doing some of these others, it would seem like maybe a new question after the first one, which would be, you know, how satisfied are you with the sidewalk improvement program, which began in 2019? I mean, we were asking those questions about pedestrians and, you know, I mean, we have that satisfaction survey. So I think maybe we wanted to ask that question. And then it, in, on question two, E says property owner funded with city cost partnering. And I guess, and then it says existing program. I think our existing program really is cost partnering based upon financial need as opposed to some of these cities that do 50/50 cost sharing, not with financial need. So maybe if I'm correct on that, maybe we have a, you know, add one that says property owner funded with city cost sharing. And then, then one that says property owner funded with city cost sharing based upon financial need parentheses, the existing program. There is some financial assistance if you own two, if you, if you're on a corner lot without.
That's the cost share of 50/50.
But not generally speaking.
Just on corner.
Yeah, I just, I mean, a lot of these communities do these 50/50 cost sharing or, you know, some other cost sharing things. And we're not really capturing that in the question. A general program. So I wondered if we could maybe think about, I think you don't need to wordsmith that here, but maybe differentiate what we have now versus a more general cost sharing program.
Well, I think that's kind of what I was suggesting, although I was probably being too subtle about it. What they're saying here in the background is what they're calling what we're doing now. Let's say I'm just too lazy to go hire someone to do it. And the city, the city shares in the cost responsibility with the property owner by assuming all costs of the project, not directly associated with installation of the new concrete, blah, blah, blah. So what, what they're calling cost share here in that paragraph and lower is, you know, working through the city and having it added to your taxes or paying. I, that's kind of why I was objecting to that verbiage because it makes it sound like you said, like we're sharing some tangible amount when really it's the organization and the doing it all at the same time.
So Jacob, can you explain your interpretation of E? Because it seems like we have differing interpretations.
Sure. This is Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. So the, the way the current program is set up with that construction project, you know, the, the city will go and repair a property owner sidewalk. And they only pay for the bid price of the four inch concrete that goes in. Like the memo says, you know, they're not going to pay anything for the contractor mobilization, the removals, the grading, the seating, the traffic control. So that's why you see through the three years, $2 million has been spent, but the property owner is only billed for 612,000. So the difference there is cost that the city paid on behalf of the property owner for traffic control, mobilization, grading, removals, seating, et cetera. So that's what we're attempting to explain with, with cost partnering, that there, there is a a partnership there in the program.
That's, I guess I never thought about our program that way. I mean, if someone, I mean, if you, when we call the city of Manhattan and they say, we pay 50% of the cost of the sidewalk, we, we share 50/50. If I'm looking at these numbers, are we saying we pay 66% and the homeowner only pays 33%? Because we pay 2 million and they pay six, I mean, that's rough math, but I mean, is that what you're saying that we, we pay 66% of the cost of a sidewalk?
Yep, Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. That's, that's how the math works out.
I've never considered our program to be a matching fund program. That's interesting. I guess I've never thought of it that way.
Well, that's because that's not what we call it.
Yeah.
And we don't give any receipt or information to the homeowner as to what our share and their share is. It, right? It just ends up on their taxes.
That's correct. No, they're not aware of the, the benefit or what the city is paying for the repair that, that share on their property. If at the end of the construction project, we accumulate the quantities for each property and send invoices minus any financial assistance that they've been approved for. And then they have a certain period of time to pay that invoice. And then after that time period's up, that's when we send those remaining invoices to the county.
So Jake, this is.
No, I was just humming. Would not have articulated that way.
Interpretations, it's content and intent. Okay, in regards to the survey, to Commissioner Finkelman's point, and I, I wanted some clarification on the question that you asked about the satisfac- is the community satisfied with the, are you wanting to know if this community is satisfied with the sidewalk improvement program? Are you wanting to know if those who have participated are satisfied with it? Or both?
Everybody, but both. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house, but I think it's done some good things. So I might say I'm halfway satisfied with it.
Okay, I think it might be, and I understand, I don't know if, if the intent of the team was to make this a very simple, concise survey. So hopefully these recommendations could stay within those parameters. But I think there's a difference in getting information about whether someone is satisfied with the program and if they are satisfied with the program having participated. So just take that with a grain of salt. I would be good either way. I think what the question is, are, the question around if the community is satisfied with the sidewalk improvement program, you may have a, I don't know, clueless answer to put there because I think based on those who may take upon themselves to replace their sidewalks, maybe doing it because they don't want to fuss with the city or that they're not aware in how to navigate that. And I think we can take some information from that. That's a lot bigger than just the sidewalk improvement program around marketing engagement and how do we package our information to the community? And having a question like that could, could really give us a lot of data around that. So just to consider that. There was one also. Oh, where was it? I can't remember my second one because it came into a thought when I was thinking of something and I didn't get it written down. But the one question I did want to ask, based on the convert, based on the questions I shared with you, Jacob, what I noticed about the program was that not be, just to kind of help get an understanding of the landscape of those who are participating. We do have the income eligibility. I think it would, it would be an interesting data set point to know based on those who have participated or those who are taking the survey. We asked if they own a home with a sidewalk or without, or they rent a home with a sidewalk. It would be interesting to know if we could create type, we can create income eligibility buckets so that people can tell us what their household income is. That will be able to help us identify whether or not the eligibility requirements that we have for the sidewalk improvement plan, either, you know, they're either convex or concave to what the community, the eligibility, income eligibility is for the community that's, that might be seeking this program. So I mean, for me, data wise, that would be an interesting data point to have. I don't think it adds too much to the structure of the survey, and I think it would just be another additional data point for us to have as we relate homeownership, rentership, sidewalks, income eligibility, things of that nature. So those are my two pieces. If I can remember the third one before we close out, I will ask it. If not, I will send an email.
It seems a little unnecessary to me too. And number two, city funded using existing resources requires cut to other city program projects. It seems really unnecessary to me. And somewhat leading or misleading. The fact that we budget so much for sidewalks would also be taking away from other projects. We could pave a road instead of budget for sidewalks. So I'm not sure. I feel like that was unnecessary in parentheses there.
You could, you, you would skew your data. So I would agree with the mayor taking the required cuts piece off. If we just want to say city funded using existing resources or just city funded, you kind of preload, you front load your participant to think in one particular way, which they may be thinking a different way. So I would even take it as far as that was just city funded. Whether or not we use existing resources, I think to me, it's neither here nor there. People are gonna, if they wanted to be funded by the city, they're not going to care if we're using additional resources unless it leads to some type of assessment or fee or increase in taxes.
I think I would disagree with that. I think that the public needs to know where that, if it's going to be city funded, how we're going to fund it. And that kind of outlines the possibility there that if we use existing resources, then it is going to require cuts in other programs. I mean, that's just a fact.
Can I interject a comment about that to some of the discussion we had as we talked internally about designing kind of this tool? The way that question is set up is to allow each of those funding options to be ranked. The way that question is set up is to allow each of those funding options to be ranked in terms of, on a scale of one to five, how much you support each of those funding choices to be used, which would allow you to rank order them with an average score to see where there was support for which funding methodologies, if that helps you in decision making later to determine how you do that work based on what people support in terms of their efforts.
Well, then again, I would make the point that the property owner funded with the city cost partnering, usually that funding is coming from our infrastructure sales tax or even some of the other things are coming from the infrastructure sales tax. So I mean, you could make the same comment on E, which is that, um, spending this money also takes away from other programs. And in terms of, again, giving people the full information, making sure they understand, this, whatever we're calling cost partnering, um, results in that, in your balance ending up on your taxes.
I was still thinking through the cost sharing part. Jake, I guess my question for you is, is seven, is it, I mean, the math would be seventy percent, we pay thirty percent, they pay. Is that, is that equally distributed among homeowners? I mean, if, I mean, let's say we had a program that said, um, we'll pay seventy percent of the cost and, you know, and you pay thirty percent of the cost. Would we end up with the same numbers or, or is it some people getting, some people are paying sixty percent of the cost? Some people are paying twenty percent of the cost, depending if you only have one sidewalk. Maybe you only have one thing, someone else has, you know, um, five different sections that had to be fixed. Is, or is that shared equally?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. Um, yeah, I would say that's distributed fairly equally. I mean, because, um, you know, I mean, I'd, I'd love to run you through the, the bids we've got, but you know, essentially to come to that calculation, you, you take the three years of, of this program we've done, take all the costs and then subtract out what we charge the homeowners or what we, we've paid them. And that's how we get to the number. I don't know if I'm answering your question very well, but obviously the more quantity they've got on their property, the higher their bill is going to be. But I would assume that ratio would be the same.
I mean, I guess if, if, and again, maybe your answer is the same. I mean, if we adopted the unified government of Wyandotte County's language that says sidewalks are the responsibility of the owner, but we have a seventy thirty program to pay for it. I mean, is that really what we're doing? We pay seventy percent of the cost, you pay thirty percent of the cost of, of the repairs to your sidewalk? Is, if we put that in ordinance, would we be in the same place we are today?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. It would change because it all really depends on the bid of the contractor. That's just how the numbers are shaking out over the years. And we've got some really low numbers in, in terms of that unit price on concrete. If we ended up with a, a higher bid this year, then that number obviously is going to go up.
Well, I guess maybe we have bad marketing on this program, I guess. I'm, I, I should, I, or maybe I'm just falling behind. If, if someone had told me we pay seventy percent of the repair of sidewalks, I don't think that's the general perception in the community, and at least not my perception. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm the one who's not been paying close enough attention. But, um, it'd be interesting then to, to consider how to, one, codify that and, and two, consider how to move that going forward in, in a way that, that will convey that. Because that's not, and I hear people talk about the sidewalk program. They're not, that's not the understanding of the program.
It's just so you know, I would take that.
You would take that?
I would take that.
That said seventy thirty?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean.
Codify?
I'll take it.
But we got to remember to include all, we got to include all the costs there. We're not showing all the costs. Not showing all the man.
I mean, I would have.
For one aspect of a program. So you would take that for that particular cost sharing piece for, for those who are income eligible. You're not.
My goal is to put this, I mean, the other thing is if we did something like that, maybe more people would participate and we would get more economy of scale as opposed to the people that are doing it on their own and wasting their time and trying to go out and find somebody.
So are you still wanting to have the two programs with one being if you're income eligible, it's?
Yeah, I think you could keep that.
You still have that. And then we have a somehow codifier, a cost sharing plan that is potentially seventy thirty?
Or sixty forty? I mean, I would have been happy with fifty fifty walking in here. I wouldn't have known that we were doing seventy thirty.
We're making headway. I, I got a smile about sidewalks and reconciliation from the mayor. So.
But this is what we've been doing since the beginning of the program. So.
I guess I just didn't understand it.
Yep. I, I appreciate you trying to be satisfied, but like when you tell someone they have to pay for their sidewalks out of pocket and then your, so your, your Band-Aid for that is, well, we'll put it on your taxes. It's kind of a one-two punch. And especially now, I mean, this year, all of our, like, all of our evaluations went up. So the people that got that letter were displeased, to say the least, uh, to learn that was a sudden, um, expense that they needed to pay for out of pocket or that was going to magically appear on their taxes.
Yeah.
But anything that reduces the burden, which, um, is considerable.
Isn't there a loan program too? Or is that the loan program? Is that it goes on the taxes? Jake?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program. Uh, no, there's, there's no loan program. There's financial assistance and cost share.
And when was the, uh, survey expected to be distributed? I don't know if I missed that part.
Uh, Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. No, we, we don't have a timeline for that yet. We wanted to get the, the commission's feedback and get that incorporated into the survey and, and do another review on it before we would send it out. But, you know, in, in the coming months, I would, I would think is reasonable.
Uh, as we pointed out, we've, you project, um, a need for at least a million dollars a year. And we're not doing that. Um, which things will you need to be able to, um, advise us next year to invest more in this? Commensurate with the goal we've set.
Engineering Program Manager Jake Baldwin. Mayor, I'm not sure I followed your question.
Well, right now we're kind of pulling things from different places, right? We're pulling things from safer routes to school. We're pulling things out of our infrastructure sales tax. We're pulling things out of every fund that I can think of. If you really put all these numbers together and said, okay, no, it's going to be three million dollars a year to do it. Because I think, like I said, I think it's five hundred thousand dollars. Maybe I'm wrong. That we've been budgeting every year for five years. And earlier you suggested that, I'm sorry, maybe Melinda suggested it would be closer to one million dollars a year. How much more information do you need, um, either on the GA, either on the information from the gaps or, um, whatever these other scenarios are to give us an honest accounting of what we should be investing to get this done in eight years?
If you're talking about just the sidewalk repairs, um, that's the, the twelve point four million dollars on the slide. So it'd be that number.
That doesn't include the gaps.
No, no, it doesn't. No, the gap funding is, is different from our sidewalk repair funding.
But are there replacements in the sidewalk repair program or not?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. No, um, we, we've never budgeted for them until this coming budget. When Melinda mentioned the eighty thousand dollars in design and then the, the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
That's what I thought. Just wanted to be clear.
Oh, uh, did we have agreement on the, um, survey? Again, I think two commissioners, um, would like to cut the verbiage requires cuts to other city programs. Can I get another commissioner on that? For consensus?
I mean, if we're using it as context for people to rank, then I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. It's just as, I, I think it's a leading question. So I think, I think you're going to bias your, your results because of that lead in. I understand your rationale for wanting to put it there, but I think you're going to create a bias. But I mean, that's, I mean, we're, we're not assuming that Lawrence Listen surveys are statistically significant. So I just leave that there. So I wouldn't be opposed to keeping it. I'm just saying it with the caveat that it's, I imagine it's, I know it's going to create some bias. So. User warning.
I think at the very least, you need to say additional city funded, additional city funding using existing. I mean, because we're already, we're already funding it to a certain extent.
Or you could say a hundred percent city funded, because that's what that would be. Whereas that last one is, um, it's partial. E is partially city funded.
That's a good point. Yeah, that is a good.
Yeah.
A hundred percent city funded.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Versus, uh, the cost sharing funded.
Right.
I think that.
Wait, what?
That makes, well, option one is, I mean, if we're already partially funding it, she's saying, is option A a hundred percent city funded?
That's what it is.
Right. That's how I interpreted it.
Yeah. But I guess I didn't.
I'm just saying the miss, the leading part is the requires cuts to other city programs and projects. That's, that may skew how somebody ranks this.
Yeah, no, no.
You, so you're, you're giving people data that is going to, I mean, this is, you know, I'm, this is the statistical corner here of me griping about, about this. I, and I, like I said, I understand where, where staff is coming from on this and I don't fault them for that. It's just for me, it scares me seeing this in a survey because you're going to, it's a leading question. You're going to skew your data. So where, if you said city funded, fully, you know, fully city funded.
Using existing resources.
Right. Something like that. Then you, that, that other part is, is a, when you're getting to the gist of what you want people to rank it based on, then you, if you want them to rank that low, having that in there is going to rank it low. It's just, it's, I, I, I don't know how to explain it other than it's bad.
Yeah.
It's just bad.
I just think it's a factual statement though.
And, and there's, and I get that. That has, but in statistics and in surveys, you don't want to invalidate your data. You can make a statistical fact without leading some, leading and persuade, leading your participant into a question. I mean, into an answer. That's for them to decide. It's not for you to create a narrative for them. Let them create their own narrative.
So are we okay with changing to something like city funded using fully, um, using existing resources?
I think fully city funded, but I, I like the whole statement because it, it does, um, inform the community member that where that money is going to come from, just like B and C do too.
Well, we don't tell them where the money comes from on E. Do we say that that's coming from the infrastructure sales tax? Do we say it's coming from the general fund? Do we say what that money is competing with, that it's competing on the CIP with parks programs?
Like I said, this is not statistically significant, so we can keep it. I just, I leave, lead with the caveat that you, this is going to create a bias. And I leave it there. So.
And far as Z goes, if you say the existing program, just say what the existing program is doing right now, seventy thirty. Existing program covers seventy percent. Seventy percent right now.
Yeah, I would agree. It would help with our marketing.
Well, again, it's more disinformation.
I think, I think we're missing the point of the, the survey. So I, I, I don't want this to be a tit for tat. It's, if we want to, if we're going to do something like that, then you have a lead and, and we're getting into the weeds on this, which is where I didn't want to go with this. Then you do a lead in and you say, this is what a city funded, fully city funded project will look like. This is what new property tax will look like. This is what, and you can lead in with the lead in statement and then say, rank these if that's what we want staff to do. But this getting into putting in parentheses seventy thirty, that's going to start confusing people and it's, it's just going to be messy. So I'd say we either leave it as it is or have staff come back and show us something a little bit better, but I don't feel like it's that, it's, I don't think it's necessary.
I'm fine with the way it is.
Can I get you on it?
I don't, again, I, I guess I'm kind of with Commissioner Sellers. I don't, given what we're going to, they're going to do with this, I don't know if it matters one way or the other. But I do think, you know, at least saying additional city funding or something. So I think A and E get confusing if you don't clarify the, you know, additional city funding or a hundred percent city funded. And then in the other one, say seventy thirty or sixty forty or partial, or however you want to say that.
Um, I also wanted to talk about the eight years, if memory serves. We, we haven't really been making those markers, Jake. If I recall, we started out with twelve areas. That got chopped into thirteen. Um, seems like, um, maybe we haven't gotten everything completed for one year. We didn't quite get as many done as we thought we would. Is eight a realistic number?
Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. Um, eight, eight is a reasonable number, giving the right budget and the right funding. With the, with the current funding, it's just, it's hard to say without having those inspections and knowing what's actually needed. I think the information that Darren provided on that slide, that twelve point four million dollars to, to finish what we think we can repair, I don't think that fits in with the current funding in eight years.
How come all the LiDAR information doesn't give you a better idea without having to go out and inspect?
Sure. Uh, Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I'll ask Darren to jump in and correct me if I get anything wrong. But, um, sometimes that lighter, if there's a car parked on the street, it's not going to catch what's behind it the same way with a large tree. Darren, do you want to add anything to that?
Darren Higginson, Innovation Manager. Yes. So with the LiDAR, as Dick said, if there's cars parked in the way, the LiDAR can't see through cars. It can't see through trees. It can't see up hills. So anything elevated over a certain, certain level above those sensors is not going to get captured. Other issues are when you have faults, when you're looking for vertical separations. If you've walked in a sidewalk, you notice that the vertical separation is often filled with dirt and you couldn't visually see it until you scraped the dirt away and the LiDAR can't see through the dirt either. So those are areas where it's not going to pick up, um, issues as well. Um, how we are able to use the LiDAR is, you know, it's been pretty good at determining the, the sidewalk blocks where we're going to need to basically do a full replace. If we're seeing lots of issues with the LiDAR, we're, we're fairly confident that there are a lot of issues on that sidewalk. Where we see sidewalks with maybe one or two issues, we know we've probably got a couple panels, but there's a potential that there might be more issues on that sidewalk as well than just what the LiDAR picked up. So that's, that's how we're able to use that LiDAR. It gives us a really good idea of where we know the trouble spots are going to be. But we can't guarantee that the spots where it didn't pick it up, there, there aren't going to be some issues there.
Um, so do you, uh, staff, do you want to come back with this final words or have it sent to us on a city manager's report or something? So we can move forward here.
Makes sense. Yeah, I just, I wouldn't be opposed. Yeah, I just, I wouldn't be opposed to that. City manager report.
Great. Any other questions for the staff? Did we give you what you need? Thank you, Jake and Evan and Melinda and Jessica and Darren. I appreciate you. Doing all that research. And bringing that back to us. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our regular agenda, y'all. It's only nine o'clock. Considered appeal of the Historic Resources Commission determination for project DR dash two two zero zero one one four. For a lift addition to the property located at six twenty Indiana Street. Before we launch, do we need to do expert take communication for this?
Yes, that would be good.
Okay. Anybody?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have had none.
Thank you.
Lynn Braddix, owner Historic Resources Administrator for the city. And as the mayor mentioned, this is an appeal for a project at six twenty Indiana Street. Um, there are actually two appeals that you're hearing this evening. One is for a state law review. And one is for a certificate of appropriateness review, which is a local review. The state law review is something that is governed by the state preservation statute. That requires any review of any lease, permit, license, certificate, or other entitlement for use. From the city to be considered using the Secretary of the Interior standards. With the state law review, it's kind of a two fold process. The Historic Resources Commission is tasked with looking at the state law review using the Secretary of the Interior standards. They make that determination. This city commission's determination is to whether or not there are feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed project. So you wouldn't actually be using the Secretary of the Interior standards, but whether or not there's a feasible and prudent alternative to the project. The second review is a certificate of appropriateness review because the property is located in the environs of the Wilder Clark House. Located at six forty three Indiana Street. And that is a local review under chapter twenty two, where you would actually sit in. Um, place of the Historic Resources Commission, use those standards and guidelines to make a determination on the certificate of appropriateness. And I'll divide these out a little bit as we go through, because it can get a little bit challenging because they both have standard nine. So I'll try to keep that in mind. Uh, just a little background, the project was reviewed by the Historic Resources Commission at their May nineteenth, twenty twenty two meeting. At that time, the commission referred the project to the Architectural Review Committee, which we call the ARC, to review options that would meet the applicant's overall goals. While better meeting the applicable standards and guidelines. The ARC met on June second, twenty twenty two. At that meeting, several options were considered by the ARC and the applicant of ways. That would better meet the standards and guidelines while meeting the applicant's goals. And those are in your memo. Items that were discussed. One would be to do an interior lift. One would be to do a lift addition on the southeast corner of the structure. One would be what the applicant was proposing to take the two windows off at the front of the house. And put the lift there. And then as. Discussion happened at the Architectural Review Committee meeting, there was a proposal to move. That lift edition back approximately five feet. Um, further to the east to give a greater setback for the new addition from the front building plane of the structure. Um, the applicant chose to go with their original proposal to the Historic Resources Commission meeting. And the HRC denied, that was on the July twenty first, twenty twenty two meeting. And the HRC denied the project for both the state law review and the certificate of appropriateness review. This is a map showing the project location. You'll see in the blue green outline here is six twenty Indiana Street. Sixth street is to the north or the top of this map. Here we're showing the subject property. The red that you see is the National Register of Historic Places District. And the blue is the Wilder Clark House with the blue line. Here, the environs are the two hundred and fifty foot buffer that requires the certificate of appropriateness review. This is the main elevation or the primary elevation of the structure. This is that south elevation of the structure. And this is the north elevation of the structure. Um, it's of note to note. Um, that the Historic Resources Commission, this was a two point project. One was for the lift edition, but one was for. Um, a rather large accessible master suite on the ground floor. And that suite would have been or would be here in this location. The HRC did approve that portion of the project. And so we'll see that on the drawings in a minute. This is showing the um, location. Of the proposed lift would be where these two windows on the right hand portion of your screen. This is the site plan showing here is the new, the proposed lift edition with the roof. Um, that covers that addition. Just to note here is that large accessible master suite addition. That would be on the ground floor that the HRC did approve. This is showing the floor plan. You can see here the lift edition that's about three feet. Or a little more than three feet back from the front wall plane. And then again, this large addition for the accessible master suite. These are a little bit difficult to see because of the line weight of the drawings and the white. But this is showing what the front elevation of the house would look like. And this is the addition that's proposed. So it would stick out from the front and have no fenestration. This is what it would look like on the north elevation. The addition we're talking about is would take the place of these two windows here. Those windows would be moved um, to the exterior of the proposed addition. And then again, just the red showing you the large master suite addition that is accessible. So as I mentioned, the state law review comes into play for National Register of Historic Places listed properties. Um, or Kansas Registered Listed Properties under that state preservation law. And the HRC made their determination. So this commission does not overturn that determination. This commission looks solely at if there are feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed project. And if the project meets all possible planning to save harm to the historic structure. So. Um, based on a consideration of all relevant factors, that there's no feasible and prudent alternative. To the proposal and that the program includes all possible planning to minimize harm to such historic property resulting from such use. The regulations that go with the statute identify relevant factors. Um, as pertinent information submitted by project proponents or project opponents. In written form, including evidence supporting their positions. Feasible and prudent, one of my favorite terms used when we're looking at appeals. Is an alternative solution that can be reasonably accomplished and that is sensible or realistic. Factors that shall be considered when determining where or not a feasible and prudent alternative exists. Include technical issues, design issues, the project's relationship to the community wide plan, if there is one, and economic issues. Staff, as I mentioned, looked at several options with the Architectural Review Committee and with the applicant and found. Um, there's some information in your packet that there is the possibility of placing an addition on the southeast corner of the structure. That would provide a lift addition to the second floor of the structure. One of the things that's challenging with the historic structure. Is sometimes to get new modern uses, you have to look at. Um, altering what you consider important in your house. It's kind of a give and take type of situation where. You you may have to lose some elements to gain new elements. And so usually, an addition should be placed to the rear of the structure. Or on the least possible um, visual impact on the structure. So the lift addition was discussed, as I mentioned, on the southeast corner of the structure. Another alternative was an interior lift addition at the front of the house. Um, that would create some loss of character defining elements on the interior of the structure. But the exterior of the structure would remain complete. So staff recommends that you find that based on a consideration of all the relevant factors. That there are feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed project. And that the program does not include all possible planning to minimize harm to the historic property resulting from such use. For the certificate of appropriateness, as I mentioned, the city commission will hear the appeal. Um, of the HRC's determination by using the same standards and guidelines used by the Historic Resources Commission. Um, these standards, the commission must use of located in chapter twenty two, section twenty two dash zero five and section twenty two. Dash five zero six point one. Standard nine states that contemporary design for alterations and additions to existing properties shall not be discouraged. When alterations and additions do not destroy significant historical, architectural, or cultural material. And such design is compatible with the size, scale, color, material, and the character of the property, neighborhood, or environs. Some of the little illustrative criteria that are considered in that twenty two five oh six point one. Are the mass, the scale, the setbacks, and the rhythm. And in the staff report, it mentions how. Um, the proposed lift addition does not meet these illustrative criteria. So staff is recommending that the commission find that the lift addition does not meet standard nine in chapter twenty two, section five oh five. And that all of the illustrative criteria in section twenty two five oh six point one. And deny the certificate of appropriateness. Specifically, the proposed project does not meet the scale and character of the environs in standard nine. And the project does not meet all of the illustrative criteria for mass scale setbacks and rhythm of openings in section twenty two. Five oh six point one. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Can you show, I mean, maybe go back to the picture of the house and show where in this, you're talking about the southeast corner, where you. Is that alternative?
So it would be located in this area. And let's see, there.
That's what I could.
That's the north elevation. Let me get one more. So it would be back in this um, area for a two story lift addition.
Okay.
That's the south, that's the south side.
That's the south side, yes.
If I was in Cleo and how fallback is going, so there.
Is that where the kitchen is? I'm trying to remember from.
That's the south side. It's, um, I believe it's upstairs is a bedroom that they use as a craft room. And downstairs, it's part of an eating area.
Eating area. So just to make sure I understand that it could be put in the southeast corner. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is in other places, were there other places it could be put?
Yes, on the interior of the structure, at the front of the structure, in the general same location that they want. To put on the exterior, it would just be an internal lift.
So it was, it was denied based on standard nine. So am I to believe that? The design, it was denied because the design was considered contemporary or?
It was denied because typically you want to see additions at the rear of the historic property. This is at the front of the historic property. And by having that blank wall for the addition. Um, alternates the rhythm of openings for the primary. The side of the house and also has to diminishes the scale of the addition to make it appear larger and more massive.
And then in the summary, it lists. And I know you were saying that six twenty is part of the environs of the other. I forget the name of the house that you had, the Wilder, the Wilder Clark House. You had in here that it was a contributing structure. So in the grand scheme, in historic registry talk, what does that mean?
So the National Register of Historic Places listing is what you're looking for on the state law review piece of this. So if it's listed in the, this is listed in the National Register of Historic Places as a contributing structure to the historic district. So that's the same as being listed in the National Register.
Okay.
So that's what kicks in that state law review.
Okay.
Um, then the standard nine that I read earlier is for that certificate of appropriateness review.
Right.
And that's because it's in the environs of the Wilder Clark House.
Okay.
If um. Something was done that um. Does damage the character, could they lose their designation, their national designation?
That's typically not something that happens, um, just because most of the time the character is maintained. Um, but it is a possibility.
In that, in that southeast corner, I I couldn't, I think I heard a couple of folks say, do we know if what was in there? What was in that corner? Was it their kitchen dining room or?
I believe it's a dining area and also upstairs is a craft room.
Okay.
Or a bedroom.
Any other questions?
So if they had the, if they put it on the southeast corner, would that? Um, to go up to second floor, would that be able to access the entire second floor of the whole structure?
That's correct.
It would.
Any other questions? Uh, I think we were mostly focused on the state law review there. Were there any questions about the certificate of appropriateness? Um, thank you. Um. Do we want to do the applicant first in this situation? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Lance Adams, Adams Architects. Uh, I'm going to speak before the homeowner speak. I want to kind of go through the process uh, that we looked at. While trying to add a lift to this, this property. Originally meeting with Miller Duttons. They were concerned about accessibility to their home. We looked at many different ways to gain that. First was, typically you'll see a a chair lift of sorts. It goes on a set of stairs. Uh, you know, once again, this is a, an older home. So the stairs themselves are only about three feet wide. Uh, which a chair lift would cause an exiting issue on that. Uh, they also have multiple landings and turns and stairs coming from different directions of the house as they go up. So it was infeasible to to do that at all. So the next way we looked at how how to. Provide access to this. And we have to think about this house. It's it's really four story house. It is not just a standard two story house. Uh, the attic space is actually, it's a full third floor. They've, their boys lived there while they were raising them. They've, the Miller Duttons have been in this home for about thirty seven years. So this is not something new that they've purchased this house and they they need this. This is something that they've they've cared and loved for this house. They've raised their boys in this house. And they're hoping to stay in this house as they go forward through life. So we looked at different approaches and Lynn has addressed those approaches. The uh, the uh, the first look was, well, yes, let's put it inside. That way. It's not an impact on any type of the neighborhood or the environment. The uh, the words we keep hearing is about the property and about the structure. If if I put a lift inside this structure, that is a seven foot by seven foot hole that we cut. Through multiple stories of this historic structure. That is not a good thing. We we would keep it pretty outside. We would destroy the inside of this home. And that's something you don't want to do. You don't want to go through and cut through all that, those existing floor joists, the existing beams. To to put this. Um, into it. Also, it's an old house, once again. Also, it's an old house, once again, so there aren't great big open rooms for the space. So you start thinking about a seven-foot by seven-foot hole in the middle of your living room that's ten by twelve. You know, that, the living room is then no longer existent when that happens. There's other factors that you have to consider as well. The house has its original stone foundation. That stone foundation is actually about two feet thick. So when you go to put a lift in up against a perimeter wall of the house, that actually spaces it out farther from that, so that, that seven-by-seven opening is now, you know, seven-by-nine. So you're spacing out even farther into that room. So those items led us to start looking at, well, where can we add this to the, to the structure and do the least amount of harm to this historic house? And how is that, how is that done? Where's the appropriate place? Also, how does that placement maintain the house in its everyday use, how it was designed originally, and then where does that go? That's what led us to that front corner of the house that's set back three feet, ten inches from the front face of the house. And, and the guidelines say not on the front of the house. Well, we don't know what the determination is. There is no eight feet, twelve feet, one foot. What is, what is the answer to your distance back from the face of the house? So what we looked at was how to do the least amount of damage to this house by putting a lift on it and something that's reversible. And that's always a big thing when we look at these projects is, is what is reversible? And, you know, if, if the Miller Duttons sell this later on in life and the new owners come in, how is it replaceable and what is it replaceable? So once again, that led us to the, the two windows that stack on that northwest corner of the building. Those two windows, the first one is in the living room. The second one is actually, goes directly into, we'll call it a dressing room that, that is directly attached to the main bedroom upstairs, which is what the Duttons have used as their main bedroom for their thirty-seven years they've been here. So it was a great location for those items. The plan is that the, the existing windows, we would basically take out the lower section of wall below the windows. That becomes our opening, so our door access into the lift. We take the original woodwork frames and windows that we've removed from the house and replace those again onto the lift shaft in the same location. So we're not losing that pattern as you look at it from the elevation side. So from that north elevation, as you look at it, your, your rhythm and pattern is still there in windows. In fact, the original windows are still held in place. So, so it's not even something we need to store, try to replicate. They are there for if the, a new homeowner at some point in time wants to take this back to original. So we're maintaining that. We had looked at different options. We talked about the southeast corner, and that's what Lynn has talked about tonight, about southeast corner. That is the dining room window. And also, if, if you look at, and we've got the image up on the screen, you see that that's actually three windows. That's a bank of three windows there. So we would be doing more damage to the house by removing those three windows to try to gain access to that. We'd also be changing the, the internal character of the house because the dining room then is no longer a dining room. It's a circulation path. And so we have to reconfigure where that dining is, and there is no window then into that dining space. The upper stairs is, is a bedroom, originally designed as a bedroom. It's a small bedroom. Once again, it's an older house. By the time you put a circulation path of three feet wide into that, you've lost, really the use of that has become a wide hallway at that point. The access to the rest of the house from that southeast corner, once you go through the door to go down the hallway, which is slightly under three feet wide, which is not ADA compliant, you then pass in a, a railing for the stairs on your way to the main bedroom that they use every day. So the path wise is, is not great. Access is not great. The impact on the house on that corner is not great for what it's doing to the, to the rhythm and patterns of the windows that exist already for that dining area. Those, those are things that, that took us away from, from looking at that southeast corner on it. It also, the, the lift itself would be very close to the, the setback, which pushes it closer to the alley as well. So we're, we're within, you know, five or six inches. So it's got to be a real game of cards to get it to fit exactly into that space for that part and piece. The, the idea that was, that we explored with the ARC meeting was the elevator, or I'm sorry, the lift shaft on the north side, but we would push it back. And it was pushed back about eight feet, and we explored that with them. That eight feet then causes us to have to cut new openings into the existing structure. That would put them right at the edge of the, the wall for the living room. And then upstairs, it actually enters into a small coat closet then that would have to be removed and reconfigured to be wide enough to be able to use it as an access point for the lift. So it, pushing it back, and it's a really determination, it's, it's three foot, ten or eight feet. So we're, we're looking at a four-foot difference from what the ARC asked for. We did sideline studies. It had the same visibility for that same distance for that piece. Once again, we felt it did more damage to the property by cutting the holes in the side of the house and have to reconfigure rooms upstairs as well. It also impacted some, some shelving that's in the, it's, it's bookshelves that are in the living room. It's not original to the house, but it's been there quite a while as well. So it is all quite a bit of change on the inside of the house to, to make that five-foot change that the ARC had explored with us on that. So after we'd been through the ARC and we've discussed those options, Miller Duttons and I sat down again and we talked about what is right for the neighborhood, what is right for the house, and what is right for the caregivers of that house for the last thirty-seven years? So that's where we went back to, how do we, how do we provide this access to just the second floor? We're not asking to hit all four floors of this house. That's something that they're looking at that they will, will have to give up is fifty percent of the house access as compared to, you know, which is better than, you know, losing seventy-five percent, which is what will happen if the lift can't occur. So we looked at what those answers were, and we came back again to our original look of it's really less invasive to remove the lower portion of, of two-window openings and relocate some existing windows for the house itself. Now, you know, there was discussion on Standard nine, and I, I encourage you to go back and, and look at those points and really think about, you know, what is feasible? And, you know, which parts are really, what is happening to the neighborhood with this little seven-foot by seven-foot lift addition, but on the outside? The location of this is also, on the north side, is also away from the local historic listed project, which just barely touches the corner of this property as well on that south side of the property. So it is actually in keeping with, with not changing the environs of that local piece of property as well. So the, there's also discussions about the phase two on the project, and that was the main suite on the first level. That is a phase two. Currently, there is an office there, but they're looking to expand that and how to, how to work that to when they're at that point to where they just need to live on the first floor. They're not at that point, and they don't plan on being at that point anytime soon. That's why it is a phase two, but we wanted to plan the entire project now and, you know, give everybody the chance to see what the entire project would look like. So the, the passing of phase two, that's great, but that's not in the budget, not in the scope for many, many years. And that doesn't meet the needs of the current caretakers of this home. So that is, well, let's talk about the last HRC meeting as well. Yes, we were denied on that, but first it was a three-three tie vote for the project. It was then called back in because of the tie vote. It had to be revoked. The discussion was asked of the architect who is on the board, why he had voted against it. And the architect is also part of the ARC review committee. And he stated that he felt bound by the state guidelines to vote against it, although felt that where it was being proposed on that north side was the correct answer for the home, for the structure, and for the, for the homeowners. So that's why we're here tonight to actually talk to you guys about it. The state rules, those, those are guidelines, and those are guidelines for you guys to look at and consider on an individual basis. This is a, a great individual basis. It really is about what the structure is and how do we really impact this structure the least amount? But also, how do we help homeowners that have, have lived and cared for a home for many, many years? How do we help them stay in that home? And is it a big enough sacrifice for the neighborhood to say, no, you, you can't stay anymore, or you must figure something else out? So that's kind of where, where this is at. I also come to you as a person who lives in this neighborhood. I could probably throw a stone from my house and break one of their windows. I'm in the Old West Lawrence District as well. The Miller Duttons are part of our fabric of the over Old West Lawrence area. I have lived in, in my house for about twenty years. I still feel like the new person in the neighborhood. We are currently seeing some of our longer-term residents leaving the area, and I feel like we're losing part of our fabric and part of our history as it goes. I actually learned just last week, Tim taught me something about our neighborhood that I had no idea about, and that's, that's great to know. And I think that's important for us to think about as a neighborhood, as a community, and as a city, on how do we maintain the fabric and the character of neighborhoods? Part of that is the people in those neighborhoods, and how do we help those people stay in those neighborhoods to continue that character? So with that, if you have any questions on it, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
And I think the homeowner would like to speak as well. Thank you.
Yes, after living there thirty-seven years, I feel like I have pretty good grip on what's going on there. Reverting to my former role as a teacher, I have a handout. I just, I guess I would argue that in a sense, the proposed elevator is feasible, the one on the southeast corner of the house. I don't think it's prudent, and in many ways, it's really not very good. Anyway, we have lived there for over thirty-seven years, and we are kind of becoming aware of aging. I don't know if any of you think that happens, but it does. And we'd like to stay in the house. I mean, that's, that's a simple thing there. I was recently diagnosed with Parkinson's, and so I can see things are going to get worse for me, and I would like to stay in the house if I could. Tamara's broken bones, including her hip. And that's also not so good to have a lot of obstacles in the house. So staying there has, has real problems. Actually, we thought for a while about moving, and we pretty aggressively went out and tried to found a house, find a house that had our requirements, like one-story house in a, in a proper location. We have a perfect location. We can walk downtown. We could walk to medical care. We're right between downtown and the hospital and so forth. So trying to get something that's pretty close, go down and look, see how many one-story houses there are. There are a couple. Just, it's, it's very few. So anyway, that really, we've, we've looked at everything that's for sale, and, and that's not, not really it. But you come down to this issue of appearance. I came away from the HRC with the idea, and I think it's correct, that they really care more than anything else about the exterior of the house. So this first picture, actually the first two pictures that you have there do show the location. The first one is, you really can't see where the elevator would be at all because there are trees in the way. And this is taken from the street. This is where people would pass by. The second picture is from a slightly different point, just a few feet away. And you can, at a few points, see in and see the, the place the elevator would be. But it's not very visible. What about when the trees come down? Well, the trees are evergreen, so the, the foliage will stay there all the time. What about if someone takes them out? Unlikely, I would say, because we are on a lot and two-thirds. The house is on the south end of the lot, south side, pretty close to the alley there, side alley. And the north one is not big enough. It's not a buildable lot. So unless they get a zoning variance or something, which I don't know if that's going to be easy or not. Nothing's easy there. They're not, there's not anything going to be built there, and there's no reason those trees are going to come out. So I don't think it's going to be a, a really highly visible thing. Also, much is made of the historic district. We're in the historic district. As far as the distance from the Wilder Clark home goes, our house isn't in it, in the environs at all. One tiny corner, not even of our lot, actually. It's on the parking out on the city right away. There's one narrow slice of it that is within two hundred feet of that house. So it's, it's pretty questionable. Go down to our side of the street, though, and that's what we have next here. Next door north of us is this next picture, number, let's see, what do I have? One, no, number three. Number three is the bungalows. There's a whole row of bungalows to the south of us. They're nice, perfectly habitable houses, but they're not what we think of as great historic places. In fact, there's nothing on our side of the block that, other than our house, that could reasonably be called that. The number four picture, it's very small. The guy who lives there now has been working hard on it and really fixed it up, but it's, it's got structural problems and things, and it's, it's not a showplace, to say the least. The number five picture is a former gas station. As many of you probably know, Seventh Street was Highway forty at one time, and Sixth Street eventually became Highway forty. But when it was Highway forty, there were a number of businesses along there. And if you go drive out Fourth Street, you'll see, well, they're houses now, but they were built as businesses like gas stations and things. Well, this is a gas station from Highway forty, and it certainly doesn't meet very many people's idea of what a historic house is. And then right behind that, it's actually facing Louisiana. There are some pictures here, I think. There are some pictures here, I think are pretty interesting. This house was a plain, very plain looking house. It had been Lawrence Business College earlier and then it became a single family house. Uh, look at this, does this look like a plain four square house? Uh, it's completely totally different. These people, in fact, one of the workers on the house, when they were doing this total remodel, joked that they, they were told they had to leave one two by four in place, uh, so it would be a renovation and not a tear down and rebuilt. I mean, that's how total the renovation was, a multimillion dollar renovation. Anyway, just a couple of pictures there to just see what that looks like. Uh, five and six and seven all are of that house. It looks nothing like it used to. How, how does that get approved? If exterior is what matters, uh, how did the HRC approve that? But they did, it went through the process that we are going through and they got it approved somehow. And you'll have to ask them how, because I don't see it. But anyway, that, I just say the neighborhood is not some of the highest, uh, of the, of the historic neighborhood, highest parts of it. And then just throw in a couple of other pictures. You heard talk of where the HRC wanted us to put the elevator. And it was in the picture here that's number nine, uh, you see the, uh, the windows in the kitchen. And this would be wiped out. These are the only exterior windows in the kitchen and that's our main source for daylight. I mean, it would destroy our interior, really. I think it would really make the house much less habitable. And it seems to me that's worth considering. Uh, the other one is the, in, is in the living room and this is where we want to put it. This is what we'd be taking out. Lance has said incorporating as much of the material as we could. Uh, but this is, this is what we would lose and not these big, full of light windows in the kitchen. Just one other thing about the kitchen, this is very close to the alley. There's a cross alley goes through, it's just about 10 feet from the house. And, uh, I think my understanding is you have to have a five foot setback and I don't see how we could get five feet or have a seven foot elevator out there. That's a three foot setback, which isn't legal. So, uh, we'd have to go looking for a variance on that. And as far as people seeing it, as I've tried to demonstrate, you wouldn't see a whole lot from the street with what we want to do. This is a public alley though, and lots and lots of people would walk by and see that. People walk their dogs through there all the time. And that would be very big glaringly visible obstruction and not very much like, uh, what they would expect to be there. So for all of those reasons, I think it's a better choice not to build it that way. I just close by saying, you know, it's hard to live in a house that's over a hundred years old and make it work for modern people. And we've tried to do a, a reasonable job of making a case for it. Uh, as, uh, Lance said, in the, the initial vote on the HRC was three to three, but that wasn't a majority for us, so it didn't go. Um, but obviously they weren't united thinking this was a terrible plan. So I would just ask you to say, yeah, you think this is a reasonable plan and, and to support us. So thank you very much for your time and, uh, I'd be glad, of course, to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
So the, I was looking at the, the full plan. So this, you see you have a kitchen dining, you called it the kitchen, they called it dining, it's one room, there's, there's a separate dining room, but I can see, right?
Well, it's a kitchen with a table in one end that we use for eating, yeah. But, uh, there's a separate room that I guess some people might use for a dining room. It's quite small, has a fireplace in it. Um, and it's kind of a second living room, I would say, but you could use it for a dining room.
But historically, that's not what it's been.
Excuse me?
Historically, that's not what it's been used for. It's been used as a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
Oh, uh, yeah, it's a, and on that picture you showed us of proposed spot in the southeast corner. Um, I didn't see very much tree cover and it's, it's pretty.
The southeast corner? No, there's not. It's really very close to the alley. No, we have some small shrubbery and things there.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let's make sure there's no public comment on this issue.
Hi, um, this is Chris Flowers and I just think it's kind of ridiculous that we would be favoring buildings over people. Like, I, I'm, uh, it really does bother me that someone's trying, like, trying to stay in their home, you know? And what difference does it make, like, how the house looks? Like, if, if you care about how your neighbor's house looks, why don't you just live in an HOA? I mean, it's, it's just ridiculous to, to even be doing this, like, to, to even consider not letting someone with potential mobility issues to put something in their house to deal with that, you know? Like, it's, it's just, it's horrible. And I strongly hope you let them stay in their house. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment online?
No mayor.
All right. Um, actually I do have a question, uh, for the homeowner. You've been there a long time. Did you use, um, historic tax credits and, and over the years fixing it up?
Uh, no, never have. You should, bro.
Yeah. I've got one question for Lynn. I just want to make sure I understand what we're voting on here. If we agree with the staff report, then they would not be able to build that in the location they want, is that correct?
That's correct.
If we vote against it, would they be able to build it in that location that they want?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Lynn, while you're up here, I guess. So again, now, the, the HRC has made a determination on Article Nine, so our only question is if it's, if, if, whether or not there's a reasonable and prudent alternative.
Correct, for the state law review.
And this, is it, is it HRC's position, your position that the interior lift, the southeast corner, or moving it back eight are all reasonable, are all reasonable and prudent alternatives? Or do you just think two of those aren't reasonable, but one is? I mean, what, what's your position on that?
Well, the HRC doesn't make that determination.
They never considered that.
But staff is of the opinion that all three of those are alternative and feasible and prudent alternatives.
Okay.
Lynn, I have a quick question. Um, on the state review, was the, who performed that review? Was that the HRC or was that?
That's the Historic Resources Commission, yes.
So the commission did the review and based on the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehab?
Correct.
Um, just a quick question, I think, uh, regarding the homeowner and I believe the architect mentioned, uh, is there like a set, a set amount of distance that it has to be set back from the front elevation? Um, I, I, I didn't, I don't know if I quite heard that.
There's no defined criteria, set amount of distance from the front wall plane that you have to set an addition back, but the further back you set the addition, the least impact it has on that primary facade. So, um, when the ARC was looking at this, by pushing it additional five or so feet back, you left the original windows in their own place and had the addition behind those. And so that kept that character defining feature of the front of the house with the windows intact.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
I have a question probably for the architect, Mr. A- Adams? Yes, um, the, tell me again, why moving it back with the five feet? What was the architectural concern with moving it back, that alternative?
Right, uh, the, the moving it back five feet as discussed with the ARC. Um, the hope was to make it less visible by moving the five feet back. Uh, what that does is we would then have, we'd be cutting holes in, into the sides of the existing structure instead of taking advantage of the existing holes that are already there. Um, and then it also reconfigures, um, a room up on the second floor as well. That's a small closet would have to be reconfigured so that they could actually use that to access that spot as well. So it's actually more damage to the structure, um, as you look at it.
And on the first floor, you would be basically going through that, well, the bookshelf is now leaving the.
Correct, where the guitars are leaned up in that photograph, I think you have.
Yeah.
Where the door would be through the bookshelves and the guitars. Um, you know, it's, it, and that's what kind of determine how far back we could push it because any farther than that, you're into the stairs. And so, you know, you don't need a lift to three fourths of the way up the stairs. Um, and so that kind of really defined it. And then as you look at, and this is the side of the house, it's not the front of the house. Um, so this, this lift is on the side of the house and not, not the front of the house. It's just how far back from the front of the house that it's being set. Um, as you look at that north side of the house, uh, mainly it's, after you get past the living room, it's all stairs. And then past the stairs, it is the kitchen and then the bathrooms upstairs. So as you slide it back farther, it impede, it costs even more and costs even greater damage to the interior of the house and the, the original historic items in the house. So, so it's really, what we're trying to look at is the structure and what we're doing to the structure and not necessarily, you know, there's talk about the neighborhood and the district and all those things. And those are hugely important, but the neighborhood and the district is made up from the structures themselves. So I, I think our closest thing we have to guard on this is the structure. And that's really what we looked at is, as we considered what our options were and what's feasible and what's prudent and what's correct for this structure. And I believe we brought you that answer. Any other question? No, thank you.
Well, I am, um, just looking at all the pictures and hearing the conversation between the architect as well as staff, I, I just don't see where this addition, this piece of the addition detracts from the historical nature of the, of the neighborhood. Um, and I believe that we need to be finding ways to keep people in their homes. And so for that reason, those two reasons, I am going to vote against this so that they can install it.
I would concur. I would, I would also vote against it so they could install it. Um, there's no defined setback, um, from the front elevation. Um, I think architect's plan is pretty conscientious to even mitigate any sort of damage so it could be, um, you know, un, unfurnished if somebody else bought the property. So, um, I think they've thought ahead of that. Um, and also they're using a lot of the exterior material to encapsulate the, uh, the shaft itself. So, um, and the tree cover, I, I think that there would be some, some difficulty putting it on the southeast side, especially that close to that little driveway alley there. So, um, for all those reasons, I, yeah, I would vote against it and go with the homeowner's
I would echo those statements and I'd say, I mean, I think the southeast corner is not reasonably, reasonable and prudent in taking out, you know, the window into the, to the kitchen dining area. And then having to recreate that as a access way, I mean, the, the kitchen and dining, do you have to have that, um, access there? I mean, you couldn't use the dining room anymore because you'd have to have a place for the, you know, to go in and out of and to take out that one window. That does not seem reasonable and prudent to me. Um, the interior does not seem reasonable and prudent to me. I, I agree with Mr. Adams that cutting two large holes inside the interior of that building and, and then trying to set those inside the interior is not reasonable and prudent either economically or for the, the house itself or otherwise. So the one I was thinking a little bit about was that moving it back five feet, but again, putting a new hole in the building, just a few feet away from where you have two, you know, two windows that already are two holes in the building, um, in the house, doesn't, doesn't seem to make, you know, it doesn't seem prudent to me when you have that right there. And so then I asked the question, does moving it a couple of feet make that difference? And when I weighed those two, it doesn't seem like a reasonable or prudent alternative for that. Um, so, um, I'm, you know, for those reasons, I, I would not find that any of those three are reasonable prudent alternatives.
I agree. I look at this from a different perspective, um, all of which I agree with my fellow commissioners on. Um, I was struck on the contributing structure definition, um, and how, and doing a little bit of a dive as to what contributes our defined term of an environ makes the home designated a contributing structure. However, within the defining terms of a, of a contributing structure, there are things that could be done to the house, which then would not make it a contributing structure, which the owners might be okay with, but we're hamstringing them to that because of, uh, we're saying they're within 200 feet, which means a piece of their home, not even the actual home, the grass is what makes it part of the environ. And looking at the grand scheme of things, I could see if the house was in, I mean, I know it's in sightline, it's not next to the house, it's not adjacent to the house, it is within 200 feet of the grass. And so to hamstring owners to that, I mean, it's, it's, I don't want to go down that path. But that piece alone, I felt like was a, a bit of an injustice and why the certificate of, um, appropriateness was probably denied, which I think it was, I would argue against it in that piece. Um, and looking at, you know, the state review and I, it's interesting because I looked at the standards for rehab. And so I, just adding, looking at that and comparing it to check nine, which it may not be what I need to do, but giving myself context. Um, you know, it, it, for me, recognizing as vice mayor, um, she alluded to about aging in place and that we are at a part and we're at a place in our society where, to the homeowner's point, there, they may not be able to find what they need because housing stock period is just low. And that there are many individuals like them in different communities that might be faced with these similar challenges. And because they have a home, that's part of a designation that hamstrings their ability to do what they need to do with their home, which I think would be reasonable and prudent, um, based on the location that they decided for it. And that if they, if the next homeowner after that wanted to take it away, they could without, um, you know, causing any, you know, affecting the integrity of the home. And so I, you know, it's unfortunate that I get that these are, these are. I get that these are, these are standards. Unfortunately, I don't think these standards meet the, the needs and meet the, the, the current time of where we are at and what we are faced with. And that may mean we need to review it. I don't know. I don't want to put that on the, on the plate, something for us to consider. But alone, I just, I don't believe that what, you know, I think the criteria is a bit dated for what the homeowners are wanting to accomplish. And to hold them to that based on the fact that they are, they are, they only qualify for this because their grass is in a boundary space. I think if, if it wasn't for that, we wouldn't be here having this discussion. So it's for that alone, I can't agree. And I would side with the rest of my commissioners.
I, I actually, and, and my subjective opinion of what it looks like is not terribly relevant. But if one did put the lift on that southeast quarter would actually create more symmetry where they in the future would like to build that other addition would give it more balance. I do kind of think that putting the lift in the north corner gives it kind of a monolithic side. I agree that we need to be kind of flexible. I think I can, interestingly enough, I, I feel that I could vote for one, but not the other. So I will therefore just entertain a motion. I think we have two separate things we need to vote on.
Do we do both at the same time?
Mayor, before we move on, yeah, Lynn, can you advise on what the motion's gonna be or Randy's online perhaps on how they should?
Because one is a state law review and if you make a determination that there are no feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed project, we have to give five days' notice to the state historic preservation office. So that should be one vote, one motion, one vote. And then the certificate of appropriateness would be a separate vote.
Make the motion. As to the state law review, based on a consideration of all relevant factors, there are feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed location of the lift addition project. And the program does not include all possible planning to minimize harm to the listed property.
Well, that's the wrong.
Yeah, just.
Motion. Well, we need to change it to do what we want.
Oh, I see. I thought we were just gonna vote against it or whoever, however.
No, I think we want, I think we need to say, based on the consideration of the relevant factors, there are all no feasible and prudent alternatives to propose, propose location of the lift addition project. And the program does include all possible planning to minimize the home to the listed property.
Okay, so then, yeah.
Exactly.
Second that.
So I was just gonna vote against it.
So I think we want to make that finding.
Make a finding. Yes, second.
Oh, I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Boy. No. That passes four to zero, four to one. Next?
And I think of the certificate appropriateness, we're going to say the proposed location of the lift addition is, will not, will not significantly encroach on, damage or destroy the landmark or its environs. And thus issue, thus issue a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed project.
It's a lot better than what I came up with.
I stole it. I stole it from their decision on the suite.
So.
Their, their qualifications were different, right? Design criteria for mass scale setback.
Yeah, on the actual motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the agenda.
So.
Yeah, help me, Lynn. I was looking at the certificate of appropriateness, how they voted for it in the HRC, but maybe that's a different standard.
Yeah.
Lambraic Zoller Historic Resources Administrator, that is what your motion would be to issue the certificate of appropriateness and find the proposed project does not damage, encroach upon or destroy the listed property.
So to be clear, my motion would be the proposed location of the lift will not significantly encroach on, damage or destroy the landmark or its environs.
And issue the certificate.
Can dish the certificate of appropriateness for the proposed project.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five to zero. Thank you everyone for coming.
I just have a quick question. So why would we have not have just read that from the action proposal under certificate appropriateness and say that it does meet standard nine?
Uh, that'd be questionable, Lynn. I, I, I just, I went to the HOC and looked at, when they approved.
When they approved.
When they approved the suite.
In our, in our action motion, it's totally different. It's different.
But it's the context of.
Lynn, what's?
Standard nine.
Either one of those would be an appropriate motion.
Motion, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Randy said, okay.
You should ever let some put it in.
Yes, yeah. Randy was okay with that motion?
Yes, this Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney, yes, those, those were fine. Either one would have been appropriate, either one would have worked.
That brings us to item number two. Consider it a pending resolution number seven, four, four, two, authorizing city staff to submit to the county clerk the proposition for a modification to the city's government.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I will be brief. Maybe my voice will hold out. Maybe it won't. I'm a little bit under the weather. Last week, we brought a resolution before you that if approved, would have submitted a question to the qualified electors of the city, a proposition to modify the current form of government. After hearing comments from Dr. Albandian and the general public and the discourse of the governing body, the governing body directed staff to come back with the resolution that would submit to the qualified electors, a modification of the government from what we had currently as a commission manager, former government to a mayor, commission manager, former government. And that would entail a separately elected mayor who would, a nonpartisan mayor who would serve a four-year term. There would be four nonpartisan commissioners who would also each serve a four-year term. And they would be elected staggered so that there would be two at one election cycle and two elected the next election cycle. And then the city manager would continue to, to manage and operate the city's day-to-day operations. And anyway, what I have with business before you today is the resolution that would accomplish that. What we need to put in the resolution basically is the, the former government, the officers and their terms, and then the ballot question, which then would be put on the ballot. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, uh, let's see if there's any public comment.
We're gonna go to, um, they're talking about going to a mayor, commission and then city manager. So what was the mayor's duties? Is it still just a ceremonial thing? Is it still, that's a question. The other thing is, is what if somebody wants to be on the commission but also wants to run for mayor? Are they gonna be able to run for both spots? And then what do we do if something, I mean, there's a lot of variables here. What do we do if something happens with the mayor? Does a commissioner step in pro temp? And then do we have another election? There's other questions here.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. Um, I, I sent in some comment today. All, and I agree, like, I was just wondering, I mean, if it's allowed, I'm, if, I'm not sure if I'll run or not. But if I do run, I might consider running for both commission and mayor at the same time. I think you can run for senate and president at the same time. I mean, they are technically two different positions. If I'm, my understanding is right, that the mayor would be different than a commission position. Also, if that's not allowed, should Lisa Larson or Bart Littlejohn be allowed to run for mayor this summer? And then someone, if they win, someone gets appointed to their final, to the, their, the rest of the two years they have left on their commission term. And also, I, I don't, I think this has been done too late. I, I mean, the county did their, put theirs on the ballot, I think, back in February. And also I want to present this idea that we have the, an elected mayor, but the way we do it is we have the, the general election and we'd have the six candidates that advance out of the primary and plus the two incumbent commissioners. So that'd be eight. And we'd ask the question of these eight, who do you want to be mayor? And we would use ranked choice to determine. And it ended, if like, on the off chance that, um, let's say someone that like, who gets chosen to be mayor doesn't finish in the top three as a commissioner, then that would be invalid and we just go down the list. And if someone doesn't want to be mayor, they could be like, no, I don't want to be it. And we'd go down the list using ranked choice. And what this would also do is give the voters familiarity with ranked choice because the task force did say ranked choice would be worth considering in the future, but they were against it at this time because it might muddle things up with the districts. But if we're not gonna be doing districts, why can't we be considering ranked choice with this? So I, I just want to throw that out. And here's the other thing. What this would do, it would allow, it would still have the two, the two-year term. So three commissioners would still be up for election each time. And it would keep it the most, I mean, it would keep it closer to how it, it is now than what I think the, this, this proposal is. So I just want to throw that out there, but really I, I don't think we should be doing anything this year and just pass it off till the next year because we're too far into the election cycle at this point. Thank you.
Good evening, Marcy Francisco, 1101 Ohio. And I did send a letter to the commission today, sharing some reservations I have about this plan. Although it sounds like every commissioner having a four-year term is equal, this proposal creates two classes of commissioners. One set that's elected for the same term as the mayor. And the other set is the two people that are elected in the off years. Commissioners elected in the same year as the mayor, and, and I guess this is my understanding, who want to continue to serve would have to make a choice in their next election. Do they want to run for mayor or do they want to run for city commissioner? Commissioners who were elected in the off years could run for mayor without having to make that choice. If they're not elected mayor, then they get to continue to serve on the city commission. However, if they're elected, having them take the office of mayor would create a vacancy on the city commission. And that would require the commission to make an appointment to fill out the remainder of their term. I hope you agree that the ideal is not to have appointed, or the ideal would be to have elected rather than appointed commissioners. So I'm guessing that the current commissioners would be among those people who wanted to run for mayor. And so I think this would add to that uncertainty and possibility of having more appointed officials. A second concern, and one we are lucky in our community not to face very often, is that when a majority of the public disagree with the direction of the commission, they should have the opportunity at that next election to throw the rascals out, right? Currently, three members are elected to the city commission every two years, allowing for the new members to make up a majority. Under this proposed scenario, that would be the case only every four years. And I think this would significantly reduce the public's opportunity to address concerns through city elections. A third concern would be that without expanding the duties of the mayor, the major substantial change would be having one person suggesting appointments during their four-year term. And this could reduce the impact of the full diversity of the commission. So finally, any proposal on our ballot, yes. Is it time?
I'll give you a few seconds.
Okay, just any proposal on the ballot deserves full consideration. There's a lot of other things. Next year, when we're talking about city commission and school board elections, that's a more appropriate time because this question of how we elect our commissioners and mayor would be appropriate to those forums. Thank you.
Any other public comment? In the room? Uh, is there any public comment online? No, mayor. Okay, so I did want to answer some of these questions. Randy, I'm gonna call on you a second. Mr. Aravi, we talked about this last week. I think you had already gone on that the duties, the description of the mayor is exactly the same. This will just be a four-year mayor. It was one of the reasons I was uncomfortable with it. They decided to have a directly elected mayor before they even determined what the responsibilities would be. So exact same responsibilities. Randy, can you elucidate whether you can run for two spots at the same time?
To the extent that you can under law, you would be able to do that. And an existing commissioner would also be allowed to run for mayor. And if elected, then the mayor, that person would have to choose which office that they would hold. And then there would be a vacancy in the other office. That, there's cases out of Kansas City that have established that. You can't have, hold competing offices. But it would, that would allow everybody who was on the commission or anybody in the public to run for mayor without any, any limitations.
But you cannot run for city commission and mayor at the same time. You can't be on the ballot.
Right, I would guess not. That to, I mean, if you can do it and understand law, which I don't think you can. You wouldn't be allowed.
My understanding.
Yeah. I'm just saying to the extent you can do it by law, but I don't think that you can, so.
Your other question, Mr. Aravi, was about a vice mayor or something, and we didn't address that either. So maybe we'll discuss that here in a minute.
This Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney, that was, that's something that will be established by ordinance because one, once there's a vote and say it passes, then the duties of the mayor, the duties of the commissioners would all have to be established. The terms will have to be established by ordinance and there, there would be, you know, setting up who would be vice mayor, how they would establish who was vice mayor. And, and those types of things would all have to be worked out by ordinance. And that would be done before the, a candidate would have to submit a petition for, to run at the next election. But that would all come to you in the spring, probably.
And that would allow us to set term limits.
Absolutely, yes. The, the terms and, and, and the duties and obligations and rights of the commissioners and the mayor would be established at that time.
Any other questions we have? Randy or the?
Um, Randy, uh, just kind of going to what Ms. Francis or Marcy said and Chris said regarding the timeline. Why, why would we need to have it in by September 1st? And what would, would there be anything precluding us from putting in on the ballot next year?
This Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney, if you want to have it on the November 2022 ballot, it has to be to this county clerk by September 1. Otherwise, there's nothing that would stop us from having it at the next election. Now, I would note that if. Now, I would note that if, if it was submitted in November of 2023, then the elections under the new government would not occur until November of 2025, which would be the next city commission elections. So that's, if we have the vote now, then there would be votes for the new government in November of 2023. But if we wait till November of 2023 to submit this proposition, then the new government would not be elected until November of 2025.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And any other comments? I did say the other day that I thought four years was a long time. And another former mayor said the same thing. But we didn't talk about appointments being made by one person for four years. Does anybody have any comments on that?
Well, I think we talked about this and the panel talked about this. Technically, the mayor doesn't make appointments. The city commission makes appointments.
Right.
And, and you see in cities that have mayors, you know, Topeka, Wichita, other places, that the commission review of those appointments is much more robust than we typically do out of, I guess, more deference, knowing you only have one year. We usually let people appoint who they want. But, but when you, when you look at Lenexa, Wichita, whatever, again, it's technically the city commission that that makes those appointments. And so you just see more robust discussion about them. And you see different mayors do it different ways. Some of the mayors, you know, for that reason, ask commissioners to give them names. And then they quote, you know, appoint them, but they get their names from different, I mean, so those. But again, the, nothing would say that the mayor would have to. We could change that by ordinance. We could, you know, we could, you know, we've passed resolutions where, you know, each commissioner gets to appoint one person. You know, you could do it different ways, but more typically, you, the commission takes on a stronger role in that, in that process than we typically do here.
So I have a quick question. Mayor, you had made the point to say that two years, four years is a bit much. But when we discussed last, we discussed commissioner terms last year, last week. It seemed to be a general consensus around changing from the third place finisher from two years to four years. So I'm just curious to know, is it, what is the context behind? What's good for the goose is not good for the gander piece? So why is it, why would it be okay to switch those two?
Well, two things, they're, they're different jobs. And one thing I think about the two year term, we didn't talk about it too much because evidently we agree. I think that's one of the things that's contributing to our turnover, which was what theoretically started this conversation in the first place. One of the reasons is that our city manager happened to notice that we had a pretty high turnover for what we do. And I think what happens is the person that gets the two year term gets tired of running every two years, among other things. The other thing is, what I've been doing for the last six months, a lot more than what I was doing last year, a lot more. And to do it for, for four years, I personally think would be very, very difficult.
So just based on your experience, your thought processes for, if we were to do a mayor commission manager form of government, that it should be two years, not four years? And even if we stuck with a commission manager form of government, you would still want it to be two years?
We could do that. We could do that right now.
I know, I'm just, I just want to make sure that one is not better for one situation than for the other.
I don't think so, except that I do think there's so much additional work that it's a very different, a little, a little bit of apples and oranges.
Right, that two years is the sweet spot and four is just overkill.
Or being the mayor.
Okay.
Well, I didn't find it to be too overwhelming when, as far as the amount of work that was needed. One thing I did that I didn't like as much is that when the mayor does the appointments for the boards, the list that the mayor pulls from are from people who applied or from their own personal list. But none of the other commissioners get to see that list. And I never understood that, and I never questioned it. But I never understood why all the commissioners couldn't see everybody who has applied. And so they can get an idea of what the quality of candidates we're seeing that we can pick from.
Is that a process or?
I don't know that it's a secret. I mean, we.
But that's what I'm asking.
You have the password to get into them.
Good question, I guess.
Yeah, I was.
I think they should be open, but I don't know.
Yeah, I always thought about, I just didn't do it.
I mean, you season people brought it up. So I'm wondering, is that just a, is that a process that mayors just never? Because to your point, Commissioner Finkel, that the mayor doesn't appoint the commission, the governing body appoints. But if the governing body doesn't have access to assist in those appointments, is that a reflection of poor process or?
Well, there's no, there's no rule that we can't suggest. I've suggested people to you and you to me. I, I don't know that, at the moment anyway, we're so ideologically divided that, that this has been an issue.
I think it's just that the mayor's given the password to get into the list, and I never understood that. Yeah.
I think we can fix that.
Yeah.
No matter.
I imagine so.
I did want to check in on Marcy's suggestion about only every other election would have a majority that you could vote out. Anybody have thoughts on that?
I mean, I do think, I mean, I mean, I guess, two things. I mean, one, certainly, with rare exceptions, all the concerns Marcy brought up are true of any mayor commission, former government or any mayor commit, what's the other type? With the precincts, commissioner, because you, I mean, you have an odd number. And unless you do it the way we do it with the two year terms, it's very common in many of the cities, Lenexa, Lethal, Wichita, Topeka, where you do, you can't throw everybody out at once. So it, it is, it is a true, it's a true statement. And, and the question is, what are you, what are you gaining for that? And me, again, as we talked about, I think getting the four year terms for everybody and getting rid of the two year term is a major advantage for the, for this, you know, for the operation of the, the city and, and, and having some continuity there. So you do give something up, but in return, you get the four year terms. If you want four year terms for everybody, then you're going to give that up. So again, true statement, but I balance, I think the balance of that is better to get rid of the two year terms. Same with the off years, absolutely true what Marcy's saying. I mean, that would happen, but that happens in any mayor commission, former government. And again, the, the only way, I mean, if you want a directly elected mayor, then this isn't, this is a negative. So what's the, you weigh in the advantages of a directly elected mayor versus this negative? And I, to me, this negative is not all that great, you know, compared to the benefits of a directly elected mayor.
The directly elected mayor that does the exact same thing we've been doing.
Yes.
So is there any other questions on that?
I guess I do want to say, I think we probably should have a discussion about whether or not this is the right time to have the election. I lean that way, you know, we had this, we had this, the, you know, the commission, the board, you know, come up with a recommendation, you know, the, I mean, Albandian's group came up with a recommendation. And then we discussed, should we do public comment and vote on this now? Or should we wait till closer to the election? And we decided, well, this is too soon in the process. So we took five or six months off and started the process here in August with a public campaign followed by the vote. I mean, you know, but in my thought process at the time was that makes sense because everyone's known about the plan for eight months. Well, now we're putting a different plan out in front of people. And they've only had a week to think about it. And it's different than what's been out there for six months. So I guess it's worth pausing to think, is this the right time to do it? Or should we have more engagement? And we only have till September 1. So if we want to do it, we have to do it now. We can't put it off and have more public engagement and get it done. But you, to Marcy's point, you could put it off till next November. But then you're voting on it and then it doesn't take effect for two years. So I think that is something I had not thought through as much until I started getting a lot more comments this week saying, I liked what you had last time, or this is different. And we haven't had much public engagement on this particular suggestion. I throw that out, what other people think.
I, I would, I'm also kind of similarly thinking about that as well. Just because Chris made a great point that when the commission brought it forth, or county commission brought it forth in February, they had an opportunity to go ahead and have that nine months of engagement ostensibly until the vote in November. And part of it was being at the county fair and having a booth and telling people about it face to face. You know, all those levels of communication. So, yeah, it's.
I'm fine with moving it forward, but I can go either way.
Commissioner Sellers?
Oh, no, I was just thinking, I'm more concerned with making sure that we implement something that truly speaks to what the community wants. I'm not necessarily concerned with the timeline or whenever it's on the ballot. It could be on the ballot in November if we believe that we've given, if we believe that the information we have based on what the community has told us is adequate enough to make that decision. If we believe that it's more feasible for next election, I would be fine with that because it doesn't, I'm not strung up on the idea of this is going to be implemented, whether or not I'm included in the equation. And I'm not saying that, I'm not projecting that on any commissioner. I'm just saying it's, I'm more concerned with, are we agreeing to something based on what we know the constituency wants? Or if there is some uncertainty in that, then it behooves us to perhaps push it back another year and do the due diligence that we feel like it needs to be done. Because I enjoyed the, I believe the task force did address one aspect. But for me, it, it just opened up additional questions I had. We've all presented our own research, you know, mayor, you've gone in deep. Commissioner Finkel, you've gone in deep. We've all brought in different pieces that we've researched from other, which meant that the task force report wasn't enough for us. Our research wasn't enough for us. And what we've heard from the community has not been enough for us. So instead of rushing to put something in place based on what we think the community wants, and there's not a sense of surety, then I would hesitate. And I don't have surety right now. I don't. And I think we're going, it, we may, we may potentially have individuals vote on something in November if we push this. That may not work out. I mean, we can repeal it and we can take that up there. But I mean, that's more work. And so I, I can say that based on a lot of the information that I've received since last week, and just with doing my own deep dive, which could be a gift or a curse, I'm not comfortable putting this on, I'm not comfortable putting even what we've put together. And I apologize, Randy, it is great work. It's just, I just don't feel like this is something that truly reflects. I, I don't think this truly reflects even a consensus of what this commission wants. So, and that can be dangerous, especially when we're putting it on a ballot.
Well.
We don't have the mayor fees.
Yeah, for what it's worth, you all heard what I thought last week. Although I think there are, there might have been other things. Some of the hybrids that we talked about might have been a different situation. And I, I also had suggested that, you know, if it was a directly elected mayor that didn't vote. So their, their neutrality and their ability to get consensus was what was more important about that job. And it, it's concerning to me that most of the people that I hear from in the community who want this, even though the job is exactly the same, as I kind of remarked last week, it's more about the perception of status or the perception of some change which isn't real. And I find that very strange and concerning. And I think about younger people and some of the movements, Sunrise, Black Lives Matter, they're decentralizing. They're not thinking of ways to make things more top down. They're trying to think of ways to be more collaborative. And in defense of what we do now, however strange it is to people, it's collaborative. I don't have any more sway out there in the community than anyone else sitting here does. We take turns, which again is strange, but pretty egalitarian. It does provide for the opportunity to have voices we might not normally hear if the way that we get the voices up here is by spending $170,000. So, I mean, I, I have to speak a little in defense of what we have now. Just kind of to comment on what Commissioner Sellers says, like, what are our values? And when I think about Lawrence, it isn't top down values. So for me personally, it's not a fair trade off. I don't think we're going to get out of what we want. I think four year terms not only seems like a long time, but, you know, being in a position of perceived power for that long contributes to possibility of corruption and entrenchment, as I talked about last time. All that being said, the voter can vote. I mean, put it out there and see if, see if other people also don't see the point of a directly elected mayor who does exactly what the current mayor does. So I, and I did not expect Commissioner Sellers to walk in here with a, a different idea. So I, I'm, it's, it's always worth letting the, letting the voter decide. But I think we haven't really given them a real option.
Well, and again, not that I expect to go there, but with that, I mean, I, I support, as I did last week, putting what the, what the committee put in front of us in front of the voters. And if we put that on and they voted down, we'll know something. If we put what they recommended and everyone's known about for six months and it passes, then we have something. I know that there doesn't, I guess, you know, what I've heard a lot from this week is, oh, gosh, I thought you were going to put what they recommended on the ballot. That's what I've been thinking about. And some people like it, some people don't. But once we decided not to put it on the ballot, I started hearing from the people who liked it saying, gosh, you know, why don't you put that on the ballot and see what the people think of it? Instead, again, my only concern is what we're putting on a ballot is something that we've only talked about for a week. And the more I thought about that, I wasn't sure about that. And, but I, I know this, this commission also doesn't support what the, what the recommendation was from the committee. And, and so that puts us in this weird quandary position of what we put, what we put there. I mean.
If we put it off for a year, it would also give us, it would give us an opportunity to revisit the districting ward, whatever you want to call it, aspect of, of what the committee had sent us. Maybe better to find that and get a better.
Give you a chance to look at hybrids, which some of you talked about. Give you a chance to consider something different.
I wanted to ask you, Mayor, you said something about $170,000. What was that?
Oh, last year, last week, I was reading to you the, the amount of money that mayors in other cities that were comparable cities raise in order to get their positions.
Yeah, but I wouldn't call Wichita comparable city.
That's apples, oranges.
A little bit of fuzzy.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of fuzzy mess.
Well, I don't think it's fuzzy math. I just think it's not.
Power brokers realize that they get that little bit of influence.
Well, but what I'm saying is that I don't compare Wichita to us. One, population wise, it's, and there's a lot infrastructure and population wise that I would, I wouldn't use to compare to. And the population of Wichita compares on. use to compare us to. And the population of Wichita compares almost to the population of Kansas City proper. So. I mean, I think maybe, I'm not saying they didn't, you know, Mayor, Dr. Whipple didn't spend a hundred and seventy, but I, I think we have some natural controls in place that will keep us from getting that high. And if not, then that is worthy of a, a conversation that can be directed that a commission can, you know, that's, that's something that there's enough natural controls in place, I think, that can prevent us of that. But I think you do bring up an excellent point of just the equity and running for office and what that means and, and you know, politicizing, you know, the campaigning piece and what that means. And do we put it, do we continue on a pathway that makes it financially inequitable for somebody to run? I think that's a conversation to be had without being, being comparative in, in that piece. But I mean, I get what you're saying, but there's things that we can compare ourselves to Wichita. That one is not one.
I also had Overland Park and Lenexa. And the only reason I didn't have Topeka is for some reason they don't publish less their statistics.
Yeah.
And they were all dramatically more than we spent.
Right. And those are all communities that are quite bigger than Lawrence. Having lived in Overland Park, Olathe and Shawnee, those are all relatively larger. And I know that they have wards and districts and things of that nature. So I don't know. In campaigning and with elections and I think when you look at costs, it's not really apples to apples. And I don't, and I think there's a place to talk about that. I don't want that to be. That's like a tier two discussion as far as a form of government piece, but it is something that I, I recognize as, you know, having ran and having run out large and what that means. And we've all experienced that. And that's something to, to discuss when we talk about equity and inclusion piece of it. And I've talked about it in regards to districts as well. But, you know, I, it just, it made me think of, I mean, there's just a lot to talk about this. I mean, I, you know, Rowland Park is a community that's way smaller than us and they have eight people on their, on their council. So with wards. So I, I think there's a lot that this conversation can dive into, depending on what path we want to take, how deep we want to go, how wide we want this to be and how, you know, what that's going to look like. So, I mean, I, I am not opposed to us processing through this and revisiting it for, you know, this time next year for a ballot initiative in November.
Oh, I, I would hope that we would revisit it earlier next year so that we could give people like a good runway to, you know.
Right. That's what I mean. We, I mean, we can revisit it, but I'm just saying to put it on the ballot for November.
Gotcha.
But not like just so late in the season to do it.
Yeah, I think that's what Commissioner.
Did we just talk ourselves out of that?
We did. I think we might have. But, um, you haven't, you haven't won yet, right? Cause you haven't.
Absolutely. No.
So the question is, do you just, I mean, if, if, if we don't adopt it tonight, it doesn't happen this November. You can defer the item. You can just not vote on it. You can. I mean, it seemed to me that you would maybe just defer it and then.
For, for further discussion.
Bring it back another commission meeting to discuss other options.
But if we defer it, would we just defer it on the mayor item or would we bring it back for discussion?
No, I think. And that's unless people are willing to vote for the, the commission recommended.
You had to try. We give direction to staff. Randy, you are a champion, number one, for writing all that up. Number two, for sitting here with us all night long with COVID and being uncomfortable and unwell. So thank you.
By the door.
Randy, do you want a motion to defer? So there's a vote on the deferral?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. Yes, but I, I think probably should vote on either deferring it or tabling it to another date or something. Deferring it indefinitely, something like that. And we can bring something back later.
One, two, three, four. No.
I'm listening. Anybody?
Could we just say it? Um, defer adopting resolution number seven, four, four, two until 2023 specifically?
Definitely then.
I want to defer indefinitely.
I mean, deferring it definitely just means that we can just bring it up in a commission item and say, hey, it's January sixth, let's talk about that form of government again.
Would that work, Randy? Or do we need something more specific?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. Indefinitely would work if you're going to, you know, if you're going to just set that at some time in the future and you don't know exactly when you're going to rehear it. Otherwise, I mean, typically when we defer something, we'd like to defer it to a date specific. But I don't know that we have any date specific and you're probably not going to revisit this until early next year. So, you know, you can say bring it up again in 2023, or you can say definitely either would be fine.
Well, I'd say my motion stands in.
What's the motion?
To defer adopting resolution seven, four, four, two till 2023.
Works for me. Second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Name?
What? I'll.
Okay. I got one more.
Aye.
Okay. That is, that passes four to one. Let's move on to commission items. Anything?
I had a question. Oh, on the, in the, in the minutes I put, um, which thank you, Sheri, for those. I, I did bring up the issue of the special rate and to have staff go back and look. I didn't, I know we didn't put a timeline or anything on that. And I didn't know if we could, could we bring that back when the rate model discussion occurs?
Just so I'm clear, are you questioning what the minutes say or you're just?
No, I'm, yeah. So sorry. So I would like for the special, for staff to bring back what they've researched on the special rate. Special rate exemptions to bring that back when they bring the rate model discussion back. And I, that's a lot of backs and whatnot. And then, um, I know we've kind of put a pin in the homeless and housing discussions. But I wanted to possibly suggest as a work session, having, um, our city and county entities that deal with the continuum care come in and kind of explain, give us an overview of that and how that feeds into the work that they do with several of our housing and housing services partners.
I think that's a good topic to hear more about.
And I know that was something that was brought up in several discussions we had with the community shelter and other housing entities that they work with the county continuum of care, but we really don't know the inner workings of that and what that relationship looks like. And it sounds like several partners who receive either pass through funding or funding through us should be part of those conversations, have not been part of those conversations. And so as a commission, I think it would benefit us to be informed about what the continuum care is and how that could impact how we designate dollars for housing and chronic homelessness.
I think that's a good topic. I would like to just add to that, the idea of, of having staff explain or talk about, discuss how this fits into our, how those continuing services will fit into our housing first model, which is built for zero.
Anything else? That brings us to our city manager's report.
Thank you. There's a number of items that are on this report. This is a pretty big one. And it's got some items of some substance. The ones I'll draw your attention to. We did send out the draft ETC Institute, and I just want to clarify, we, we still have, they're still in the field over sampling so that we can get some specific subgroups in there. That's something new for us. But there, it's taking longer and we wanted to have you to have the overall data, which still has great validity because they've pulled so many samples. It's just, it doesn't have subgroup validity. So, um, or reliability. So I, I wanted to make sure that though, that you had the benefit of that for your final budget considerations. I think it's, it's really interesting information. So we included that as well. But you will have a formal presentation when we do get the oversampling results back in. The other one that I'll draw your attention to is that we did do an update on the budget. So I sent out my formal budget to you and I've sent an addendum that is responsive to some of the input that we were heard, also some additional work that we had done and trying to respond to some of your questions and comments and ask for us to look a little deeper at some other areas. So rather than just loading it all at the very end, we thought we'd give you some additional, my additional recommendations that kind of pivot a little bit and give you our thinking to date. So hopefully that's useful to you as well. That'll stand for any questions?
Questions? This is a public comment item.
Hi, I'm Linda Wheeler, resident of Lawrence in the Prairie Park neighborhood. I'll keep this short. I know it's late. On behalf of the Prairie Park Neighborhood Association, the Prairie Park School, and myself and my grandchildren, we want to thank you for restoring the budget for the Prairie Park Nature Center to the proposed city budget for 2023. And for the recommendation that the Parks Department worked with community members to identify ways to reduce the subsidy for this center. So it is not as much of a burden on the city budget in future years. It, in regards to this, it would be helpful to understand more about the priority based budgeting methodology and rubric used that placed the nature center in the fourth quartile. If it was just dollars involved, then we understand. But if there was more information used or incorporated, it would be helpful to know what that is and where it came from. So again, thank you. We anxiously await the outcome of the budget process and working with the city to secure the nature center's future.
Linda, thank you for sticking with us for over five hours tonight. You're a trooper.
Sorry. Lori Greenfield, my pronouns are she/her. I am a Lawrence resident along with Prairie Park Neighborhood Association Vice President and a second grade teacher at the school for which the first day for kindergarten is tomorrow. So this is late for this teacher, I will tell you. But I do appreciate, um, uh, the work that the city has done on this. I, the, the one, while I appreciate the work, I still think there's room for getting all stakeholders together to problem solve for future long term. This is a short term solution. But we need to also look at a long term so, uh, solution for sustainability. And I, I'm about sustainability within the classroom. That is important. We work on very little budgets and our school district is going through the same budget things. And so while I appreciate this, this avenue for right now, we would love some kind of measure that puts stakeholders together in some kind of capacity with a, uh, school district, the nature center, different entities that would, that go into the nature center to become more feasible. Like looking at how memorials could be submitted or corporate sponsors. Some, some way of helping us become more sustainable and so that you don't have that. I believe it was eighty-five percent threshold. So, um, again, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I'm glad Prairie Park's getting the money too. And it's, uh, it's sad that it came to actually putting them on the chalk and the block before all this came about. The reality is, is the budget problems are clear. We have an inflated police budget and it keeps getting bigger. And one of the easiest ways, and anybody that's been in business can understand, one of the easiest ways to cut some of the expense is eliminating the unnecessary overtime. We got this mentioned when the Prairie Park budget was put up. And there, is it true that there's a standard day of overtime for every officer? It's just a standard part of the process? I mean, in the regular working world, overtime is added above and beyond. That's how we calculate it. In business, when we look at overtime, we're looking at additional labor dollars that really don't do much more than the original dollars themselves. So why are we looking so hard at all these other issues, but we can't cut some of this overtime? I'm going to save the last part of my time because I find it a little odd that after several meetings of calling out the threats of arrest to gain compliance, this is relegated to the last item of the night and Craig didn't even want to mention it. If you guys read that, that was some great wordsmithing that happened there. Because now it's no longer a threat, it's a warning. So do I get that option? So let's say something happens out on the street and I say something that's misconstrued as a threat. And then I'm prosecuted for it. Do I get to go into the judge and say, oh, yeah, that wasn't a threat. That was actual, that was just a warning. I mean, does, does the thesaurus really make that much difference in court? As much as difference as it does on that paper? A warning, a threat? I mean, what are we looking at here? We're just playing word games? The reality is, is the man didn't want me following him with a constitutional protected right filming him. And he decided to take official action to stop that. You can call it a warning. You can call it whatever you want. But the fact of the matter is, is there are civil codes that say that's not right. And there's also city codes and civil codes that say bias discrimination is not right either. And we still don't have an explanation as to why the person that came in here and did the bias presentation was out on the street telling people that it was okay to throw people out of private businesses based on race and sexual identity. These are serious questions and we bury them like this. I'm wondering when this bias thing comes out, will it be buried at the bottom of the agenda and not even mentioned? Hiding stuff. That's messed up.
Any other comments? Assume there's nothing online. Not online here. Normally, because it's eleven oh seven, we would have to make a motion to do the calendar. Sheri, are you going to make me do that?
No.
Calendar? Anybody have anything for the calendar?
I do have, uh, just for the good of the order, I, I won't be able to make the August twenty fifth ribbon cutting. Or not August twenty fifth, I'm sorry. My head is a little fuzzy. September twenty ninth. A ways away. So I would be willing to switch when anybody.
Yeah, we can find something to switch.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All entertain motions?
Move to June.
Second.
First and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wouldn't you do mine on August thirtieth?
What's that?